In order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed, all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. A couple things before we get started. It's a full house, I realize that everyone here wants to speak in regards to one application or another. We're going to try to limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Prefer if it would be less than that. Also, there's not any need to be necessarily repetitive, but if you have unique points, you're free to articulate those in any way, shape, or form. Anyone who submitted a letter in response to any of the applications we have are in receipt of those, and we're taking them into consideration. If you choose to, you can read them or cite them to us, but if you do not, you can summarize them, and that would be appreciated. At which point, I would also like to add that please let's have a measure of decorum here tonight, rather not hear outbursts of applause or booing, so let's keep everyone keep orderly and quiet, so that everyone can have fair and honest representation, please. Thank you. Michelle, if you'd introduce the first case before us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda this evening is case number PB 1603-1, upon the matter of request by McMahon LaRue Associates, PC, acting as agent for John Marchioni for wetland and floodplain environmental protection overlay district EPod permits to replace an existing seawall on premises 183 Schnackel Drive in an R3 residential district.
Good evening, my name's Greg McMahon, I'm with McMahon LaRue Engineers, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York. I'm here this evening regarding our client, John Marchioni's, application to replace a wooden seawall around his property at 183 Schnackel with a steel wall. We have applied for and received permits from the DEC, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and also from the New York State Department of State. Those copies of all the correspondence has been provided to the town, and we are in here requesting an EPod and a floodpl- oh, a wetland EPod and floodplain EPod permit, so that our client can proceed with the work.
This time, I'd like to open it up to questions from the board. Jay, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I had about this is the, I think we talked about it a little bit at the workshop, is how is the equipment going to get to where it needs to get to in order to do the work that has to be done? There's really, there's virtually no room on one side, and there's very little room on the other.
He has access down one side of his house, coordinated with the neighbor to get the equipment, and we're not talking about large equipment. This, a lot of this work can be done with small Bobcat excavator-type equipment with pile drivers on it, but the access down the side, it'll all be done from the land side, not from the water.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had was that we wanted to replace, replace anything that was removed the same day that it was removed, and that's something that I believe you agreed to, or?
I think that was a reasonable, I can't define how many feet a day, that's certainly going to be up to a contractor, but as we had discussed in the workshop, it would seem prudent to remove the wooden portion only for as much as they anticipate they could complete in a day's work.
Okay, well, I'd like to, we'll figure out a way to put that in as a condition. That's all I have, thank you.
Richard?
No questions.
Kimmy?
No new questions, I just want to reemphasize in conversations I had with the conservation board that we, as Jay said, we want to make sure that that's replaced in each day, at the end of each workday, to the best of your ability to do so, and to also be cautious about the spread of any invasive species. So, as you're working in that area, make sure equipment is getting washed and things are getting taken care of.
Michael?
Very fine, thank you.
Mary?
I think you covered it pretty well in workshop.
Bernie?
So, in addition to the workshop, I think we covered it in detail, but I don't know if anybody asked you, have you done other projects exactly like this or similar to it?
We have several, not recently on Arondacoit Bay, I've done three or four on Lake Ontario, and several down in the, on Canada Eagle Lake.
Thank you.
Are you speaking of the engineer or the constructor?
Both.
Well, from an engineering standpoint, we've done engineering work on them at those locations.
And the construction crew that's going to be doing this?
He has not picked a contractor yet, but there are not a lot of contractors that are proficient at doing this type of work, so I'm sure it'll be a contractor who has the experience to do this type of work.
That's it.
Okay. This time, I'd like to open up to public input, anyone wishing to speak in regards this application may do so at this time? No one? No one for Schnackel? At this time, I'll close the public input portion. We're ready to move on to a secret determination. We've completed the Part II of the short form environmental assessment form, of which we find that small impact may occur with regards to the first 11 items, which include material conflict with land use, action resulting in change in use of intensity, impair the Part III, determination, we find that the EPod permit is for the replacement of existing bulkhead. This is an unlisted action, removal and existing facility and installation of a replacement structure will be done in accordance with all state and local regulations. The proposed construction methods and materials will minimize and or mitigate any potential negative impacts to the Arondacoit Bay and adjoining lands. The project does not pose any significant adverse impacts. Does anyone find anything different than that? Everyone's in agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move PB 1603-1 with respect to secret that it's an unlisted action. I move negative declaration.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, say nay? Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with regard to PB 1603-1, that we move approval upon the matter of request of McMahon LaRue Associates, PC, acting as agent for John Marchioni for wetland and floodplain environmental protection overlay district EPod permits to replace an existing seawall on premises 183 Schnackel Drive in an R3 residential district, with the condition that there be remove, in terms of removal of the wooden seawall, that there should be no removal beyond what can reasonably be replaced in a day's work.
I have that as work removed must be replaced on a daily basis, is that adequate?
Yes.
Mary, good?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, say nay? Thank you for investing in Arondacoit. Next matter. Michelle, if you will.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1602-2, upon the matter of request by I-Square LLC for revised site plan approval for the construction of Building 4, a 9,000-square-foot building with parking lot, two small wind turbines, and a site-related improvements on premises 400 Bakers Park in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, Board, Mike Nolan, I'm the owner of I-Square, office located at 400 Bakers Park in Arondacoit. We're here seeking final approval to construct our building 4, the Imaginarium. The Imaginarium is a, primarily a science center, but it's an art and science center. It's a net zero building, meaning that we plan to make all our own power onsite through a number of creative methods and some traditional methods of power creation, and obviously a lot of conservation. The building will be used as a public space. It'll be adjoined to our Building 1 by way of a second-floor tunnel into Building 2, or into Building 4, in this new one, as well as the roofs are connected by a bridge. And so this will be to show, by example, a sustain, you know, kind of a showcase of sustainable practices, best practices, and we expect the primary audience to be between 4th and 10th grade, like a field trip stop. There'll be no charge to enter and use this facility for schools and educational partners. It's something that Wendy and I are passionate about, showing off what can be done, and I'll be the center point of I-Square, and probably the highest tech side of I-Square that you'll see. And that's pretty much it.
Have you received LaBella's letter dated February 22nd?
I'm not sure I recall seeing that one, no.
Do they have this, just the engineering review? Anyway, the, I'll read them to you then, if, or if Jay has a copy, you can slip it over to him. Just wanted to know, I mean, most of these are routine comments from the town engineer. Delineation improvements on the site and utility plan to be constructed during which phase, show how the proposed improvements would transition to existing conditions along the periphery of the proposed improvements. This could affect the site creating utility plans and provide a narrative demonstration how the parking requirements for this phase and construction will be met, including handicapped access, the fire demands of the project will, how the fire demands of the project will be met, and demonstrate, converge, demonstrate, converge under the general permit for storm discharge from construction activities.
Got it, and I believe a lot of these, at least the first four under the comment, or first three of them were addressed during our workshop, where we have, Jay had asked us to, for the delineation of the improvements in the site, and how it joins the existing, and as well as the transition, mostly behind Murphs there, where we ended, and again, creating the egress and ingress for that parking lot. So that was addressed, I believe, as well, or it could be looked at as a narrative demonstration, we had highlighted it on the site plan, I believe, in red line, and indicated where the parking would be. And the final, which I believe which will be part of our building permit, would be about the, about stormwater protection during our construction phases, the way I'm reading that, and really that's going to involve covering the grates that are in the existing parking area, so that any construction activities don't wash into that grate, that's the way I'm reading that, and that would certainly be part of my permitting process.
I think most of these were brought up in the workshop, and I think you provided additional documentation between then and now, that we've heard now in receipt of.
Thank you.
Also, did you receive the letter dated March 23rd from Helping Arondacoit Plan for Progress?
Yes, I did.
Did you have any comment before they came and presented, or?
No, not really. I mean, it's, the building is certainly, you know, is a techie-type building, and I stand by our plans and drawings, that I feel they're the best plans that we can put forth.
I think before we open it up to other comment from the board, can you just talk a little bit about the energy requirements for the building and how you're providing for those?
Certainly. The energy requirements, you know, the largest one is going to be, you know, temperature control, you know, or climate control within the building, heating and air conditioning in the building is our largest load. Lighting also comes into play. We have a kitchen on the third story in the, to serve the roof customers, that has a power demand to it, and those are really our primary, you know, a lot of electronics in that really don't have a lot of power demand behind them. Security systems, you know, and so forth, don't really have a lot, but those three are ones, the areas that we really concentrated on in two fronts. One, to use as little power as we can in creating that. The building is 100% electric, so there'd be no gas piped into the building, which also means no emissions coming out of the building. The electric side, to go, we're using a all-electric heat pump-type system for climate control that'll use geothermal loops, 33-
33?
Yeah, 33 geothermal loops that will go down in the, below the parking lot area. So we use the earth's heat to temper the HVAC system and enhance that, make it a lot more efficient than the traditional. The lighting will be 100% LED, as we've done, we did in our other buildings. You know, the insulation will be an ice-ene, really thick foam, closed, I think they refer to it as a closed cell insulation, and that's just top-notch, we used it in our, in our first building as well, and proved to be very efficient. But, so what we've done is we've, we've set the building up to use as little power as we possibly can to conserve it, to take advantage of daylight and natural light, and wherever we can. So then we have to create power to offset that, and we have, we want to showcase all five renewable forms of energy in this building. Things like fossil fuels and crude oil and that have a definitive supply, regardless whether people believe that that is, you know, going to be depleted in the next 10 or 20 or 50 years, or it could last 150 years, but there's no argument that it is a, you know, a very finite supply. So renewable forms of energy are on an insurgence, and are very, very important, because they're things that don't, won't run out. Wind will continue forever, and the wind will keep blowing, and, you know, we hope so anyway, and, you know, creating power with that will be a huge benefit. Sun, using solar and creating power with that is a, you know, a big element of our building's power production. Title power is a real hard one to find in Arondacoit, but we're, have a creative way to demonstrate how tidal power can create power, how the movement of water can actually create electricity. We use geothermal, using the earth's heat, you know, the temperature down, you know, down the earth, a couple hundred feet down is very constant and even, you know, running, I believe, somewhere in the 40-degree range, but, so it never freezes in the winter, it never gets warm in the summer, and makes for a great tempering for a HVAC system. We'll have a gym in there, where all the bikes create, the bikes pedal, stationary treadmills in that all create power. So the more you pedal, the more you exercise, the more power you create that goes directly toward our building's use. And the fifth form of renewable energy outside of people power is biomass, and we're going to incorporate some form of a biomass into our cooking system on the third floor, so that we'll can showcase and demonstrate all five forms of renewable energy creation onsite, and I think the site's going to be just absolute mind-opening, that you can build a 9,000-square-foot building and make it completely sustainable, and there's very, it's not done very often, and of course, no emissions from the building either.
And I think you mentioned briefly, net zero, could you just, for the benefit of the public, just talk a little bit, I mean, just about that concept?
Net zero is something that our GNE embraces, everybody and, really, on the energy side really looks for. What you're, what we're trying to do is, at the end of the year, really use no power. So we may use, and we believe, based on our modeling, that between the months of June, July, and August, we'll actually have an electric bill, you know, it might be $100 or $150 a month, but we believe we're going to run a deficit during those months, but during the more neutral months, the spring and fall, when the outside temperature isn't that different from what you're trying to achieve indoors, we'll actually make surplus power and, and use that to offset the heavy season, the middle of winter, middle of summer are our biggest. So achieving net zero really means at the end of the year, we want to end up with no electric demand into our building.
Thank you. Open up to questions from the board now, Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nolan, I had two questions, one of them, I think one of them I addressed, or we talked about at the, at the meeting, where you showed that the wind turbines were going to put out a very low decibel when they were new, and I had some questions regarding what happens when, you know, you get atmospheric dust, or you do get dust on them, what's the, do you have any data that shows what kind of ramp in the background noise level there are? And then, if, is there any situation where the noise would increase dramatically because of failure of a bearing or the like? That was the first question I had. The second one is, with respect to your application with NYSERTA, what's the, what would happen if you, if within whatever period of time that you're, you're doing this, it turns out that the building, for whatever reason, some portions of it either come out lower, the renewable comes out lower, or the usage comes out higher, that you actually aren't neutral? Is there significant penalties on your part that you'd have to pay, or what's the, what's the result of not meeting your goals?
Okay, well, let me address that one first, because that's where my, I'm going to ask Diane to step up here on your other question, because she had a conversation with Bergy today about that very question. With regard to our overall goal, any net zero building in a building that, yeah, we're intending to commission this building, which means it'll go through a lot of very rigorous review, obviously, of starting way back from our planning stages and how to achieve this. So our results were pretty confident in the direction, in the fact that we will achieve net zero, but it doesn't happen automatically. We can, we're going to go, we've designed all these things, we're going to install all these things, we're going to turn all the lights on, we're going to do all this stuff, and it may not be right there, and we're, it's almost an expectation that it's not going to be there immediately. It will take, you know, through our building controls, actual building modeling, where we can track, you know, the temperatures in the building and so, and do that, it really is a work in progress, it's really going to be more like a 36-month process, by the time we go through each of the different seasons, find, you know, find that demand, find when we run at a surplus, and to find what, you know, what happens that makes us go into a deficit with that power creation, and then obviously work to, you know, both in, mostly in scheduling, it's really about the planning, when do we turn the temperature down in the building, when do we turn it up? No different than how we would look at it in programming our home thermostat, but obviously with a whole lot more key measures in it, you know, and basically our building modeling, our building control system will be able to tell us what the temperature was in any particular space throughout the course of the day, and evening, and through, you know, sun setting and different circumstances, and hopefully we use those as tools to, to gradually refine it to end up at net zero. I don't think we'll end up there the first year.
And you, there, there, how many years do you, do you have until you have to be at net zero, or suffer whatever, or the consequences, I don't know exactly the way.
Right, there's, there's not, there's a, not really a designed consequence in it. NYSERTA did a lot of the design and planning with us, so they've gone down, this is a planned progression through this development. It would be detrimental in a lot of ways, because between us and NYSERTA, we have just tons invested in this, and, you know, Wendy and I's investment in this will certainly exceed a million dollars. To do that and not achieve it would really be more devastating to our goal, and it's not worthy, you know, if you want to showcase something, you don't want to say it's almost net zero, it just doesn't, you know, I mean, it doesn't really grab your attention all that much.
So can, can you add, if you, if you, is there any potential to add additional solar panels if you're close but not quite, or?
There's, we hope to add some on top of Building 1, and maybe down the road onto another building, but it is our goal to keep everything on this building, for this building, you know, and not kind of borrow, but that could, we could if we had to. And with regard to noises, a couple of things we did confirm is, they can be completely shut down. We have that control onsite that we can completely shut down a wind turbine if we did feel that it was not operating, if it was making excessive amount of noise, but, Diane, will you talk to him about the Bergy conversation today, just because we asked your very same questions?
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Diane Zachrin, I live on Bellhurst Drive, and for the last 18 months, I've been a contractor on the I-Square team, with my focus on the NYSERTA cleaner, greener communities components. So we spoke to Michael Soriano from Bergy today, and asked the question, actually, your specific question at the workshop, Jay, was, you know, if a bearing were to fail in the middle of the night when we're not there, since we can shut the turbine off when we are there, what would happen? What would happen with the noise? Would the turbine keep on spinning? And what we were told is that, one, this is an extremely unlikely condition, and one that they've actually not seen happen. The bearings are manufactured as a very high-performance bearing out of a company in Belgium, and they've not seen those failures as long as the purchaser follows the inspection and maintenance procedures, that we talked a little bit about at the workshop for 30 days, 180 days, and they recommend every two years, where someone would actually climb up the tower and disassemble the turbine to check the bearings, and he said things like more lubrication, physical signs of wear would be apparent during those inspections, so we would know about a need to replace the bearings in advance of that happening. Secondly, Bergy uniquely amongst the seven certified wind, small wind turbines, offers an auto-furl feature, where if the wind becomes excessive in any situation, gust winds or whatnot, it will turn the turbine out of the direction of the wind, so as to not cause undue stress on the bearings within it. It comes with a 10-year warranty for all their components, also unique in the small wind turbine class. However, in the event that, in the middle of the night, even given all those things, if something were to happen to it, it wouldn't automatically shut off. There's not an auto-shut-off component to this particular wind turbine, we would have to find out about that and come over to turn it off. So during that time, depending on the nature of what the wind's doing, it could be loud, or if it's not turning itself out of the wind, so we would have to go in and manually shut it off in that condition. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Diane.
And then I think the only other thing at the workshop was the location of one of the windows being in front of, at least in the drawings that we had, was in front of the-
Yes, I don't have the revised drawings with me, but that's definitely been addressed.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
How about Bernie?
I have no, no questions, I think we covered it in the workshop, and I think what you just provided around service and what happens if it doesn't work. There's a plan, and I think it's going to be a showcase, and that people are going to come to Arondacoit to see it, so I don't have any questions.
Richard?
One of the, the most recurrent things we hear on the board when people are unhappy with something that's proposed is height. And by my calculations, we're looking at 117 feet total.
Correct.
And we've seen a number of photographs here, and, and you've been a great steward for that area of town, and you probably more than anybody understand the mixed-use commercial zoning district. My biggest concern, and I told you when we first heard about these turbines was six weeks ago, they didn't come up- They didn't come up when we did seeker for the whole project. We didn't discuss noise. We didn't discuss height beyond the height of the buildings, and, and it, it concerns me. The goals of the Muck District is to create an aesthetically pleasing public realm of streets and sidewalks, and you've done a great job doing that. It just, it strikes me as, as odd, as, as much as the goal is there to, to accomplish the zero footprint, we are now taking the area of town that we protect and, and our, and by statute, and we're building a hundred and seventeen-foot structure side by side with another one. And, and I know beauty's in the eye of the holder, and, and you could take a poll in this room, and a lot of people are going to say they love windmills, and I suspect some are going to say they can't stand them under any circumstance. In the Muck District, you have to get a special use permit just to be able to put a telecommunications tower up, and it has to be enclosed within the structure. And I, I suspect that when they passed the Muck statute, they didn't anticipate windmills at that time. And I'm not sure you anticipated windmills when you started this project. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I guess my question becomes, why? What, you know, I know you want to accumulate the net zero. I know you're doing what you can, but is there any way you can do it with something other than a hundred and seventeen-foot structure?
To answer your question, first, the, the structure itself is, is a hundred and five feet above ground. The only time it would reach that hundred and seventeen foot is, you know, at, at one wing at twelve o'clock, and that would be the height of the tip of that wing. The communities and a lot of things when you, the most popular conclusion people draw when seeing things like wind turbines, solar farms, and different things is that it's smart, that it's forward-thinking, that it is educational, that it is clean, that it's responsible. In a lot of cases, becomes the hallmark of a community. Arundacote is, and Carrie, maybe you could fill in the word for me, we are a climate-smart community, correct?
That's, that is correct.
And when we adopted that?
I believe it was either, and forgive me for not, but I think it was either 2008 or 2009 that the town board adopted the resolution.
Right. And this will be the first place to actually, the first project to actually take that into, and put that into play. And I think that's important, because it is, you know, again, the representations, and we are very, very into the way I Square looks, feels, and just embraces the, the area and works with it. But environmental stewardship, to me, is, is more important than virtually anything else I can imagine, just we got to take care of the earth that, that takes care of us. And I don't really have anything.
Sorry to interrupt. I, I don't quarrel with that, but I, my concern is that there's other ways to accomplish what you want to accomplish here. You know, I, I'm concerned that you've, first of all, is the, is the roof of this building going to be open like building one is open?
Yes, it is.
And what's the total distance between the, the edge of the roof and where these wind turbine wings will be spinning?
If you looked in a two-dimensional state, they'd be about sixteen feet behind the building.
Okay. And I'm assuming they're going to pivot, it's going to pivot according to where the wind is blowing?
Right, right, yep.
So you, you know, you're, you're opening your building up to, to children, there's going to be children there on the roof. The proximity, you know, the, the idea of throwing things into the windmill, that's a concern for me. You always have to be worried about attractive nuisance issues when you build any structure. I personally have never seen a windmill above a public parking lot. If the blades ever came off of that, and I know it's rare, but you have to think about these things, and I guarantee you, your insurance company will be. I've never seen a, a wind turbine spinning above a public sidewalk. So I have, I have real safety issues about the turbine.
Did you review the packet that were the documents that we submitted to you, though?
I did.
Okay, and see the ones in the Walmart parking lot and see the ones on the other buildings?
Actually, I, I did see those now that you mentioned.
Then it's hard not to, okay. I don't want to debate the point, I just, it's, it is.
And I also want to talk about the efficacy of these things. In 2009, the state of Massachusetts did a study, and I, I admit that it's somewhat dated that it's 2009, but there were complaints about the electricity output being so common that they decided to conduct their own testing program. They tested nineteen home-based or farm-based wind machines, and all fell well short of the manufacturer's guidelines, including several from Bergy. The best-performing turbine only generated sixty percent of what the company said it would provide. Some were as low as two percent. Bergy himself said the biggest issue in this article is the placement of these turbines. And, and I just don't see where you're going to get the consistent wind in that area of town where you would as if it was somewhere else in a high area. And, and I just worry about us compromising the Muck District standards in hopes that we can feel good about this building and then find out that the wind turbines don't work. And you even mentioned at the workshop that you're aware of places that have wind turbines that don't meet the goals. So I just think we're being asked to sacrifice a lot in terms of the view shed and the beautiful area that you're creating and putting up these turbines over your buildings. And I guess I don't really have a question for you, I just.
Okay, I didn't hear one either. All right. Just to respond, and just the same, the wind turbines and, and most of them is certainly the one you saw that was two percent of its rated productivity, was definitely not Bergy, and it definitely is not a, the style is more of a vertical access style, which are known not to perform. Bergy is the only wind turbine that is AWEA certified?
There's seven.
I'm sorry, there are seven, but.
But I will tell you, in this study, nineteen machines that were tested produced an average of only one quarter of the manufacturer's estimates.
Yes, definitely a different style. I'm, but, okay, thank you.
Out of how many tested?
I can give you the number. I think it was nineteen.
So sixteen out of nineteen, only produced twenty-five percent?
The state tested nineteen home or farm-based wind machines, and all fell well short of the manufacturer's production estimates. The worst just generated only two percent. All told, the nineteen machines produced on average only about one quarter of the manufacturer's estimates. And, and Bergy himself cited the biggest issue is people putting them too close to buildings or other obstructions that reduce the wind speed. So I, I guess my point is, if we're going to sacrifice the Muck District goal, then I would be more comfortable if we had more of a study done to be able to say, these things are going to work and it's going to be worth it for you. I hate to see you invest the money and have them just be hulks out there. And then what happens when they're not in use? What happens when you no longer want them there, and they're, and they're just hanging there above the parking lots? I don't, don't know if I'm saying something funny, or?
No, no. No, I didn't think it was funny. I was just, I don't know how to answer. I didn't hear a question, that's all.
Any other comment, Rich?
No.
Mary?
Well, I, I feel that it's a good plan, and I, I do hope that it comes. Anytime you're saving on the energy, it's good for our children and our grandchildren and so on. So good luck.
Thank you.
Kimmy?
Sure. Maybe, Mike, maybe you could find a study that's been done since the 2009 study, because I know in both solar and wind, technology's come a long way in a very short time. So you probably could find something that would just help support, support that argument. I, I think it's a great plan. I have a couple of questions that were actually thrown to me, so I'm going to throw them to you. One of them was, has anybody looked at the migratory paths of monarch butterflies and migrating birds?
No, I can't.
As your building sits.
No, I cannot say we have done that.
Okay, so I'm passing that question forward.
Thank you.
I'm also just curious if the spray foam, the closed cell spray foam that you put in, and that is fantastic, is it petro-based or is it bio-based? The product?
This would be bio-based, so it's a non, I'm trying to, I'm not sure of the right terminology, but it's either open cell or closed cell, it's, it's the less chemically based one, because there's.
No off-guessing.
Right, yeah. You don't have to even wear suits to spray this in.
I assume that, but I wanted to ask the question. And it might be worth, if you have it right in front of you or, or one of your partners do, to just let the audience know, viewing and hear, what your actual breakdown is on the various forms of energy that you're using and why the wind is important.
Yes, the wind represents about thirty-nine percent of the production needed to operate this building, the two turbines together. And the, the height does put them at the appropriate height for, well, it takes the buildings well out of play, because they're in the thirty-five, thirty-six foot range, but the tree line, neighboring tree lines is something that we studied a lot to make sure that we would get the, that we were putting these in in ideal condition, ideal height.
Michael?
Well, I, I'm not sure how this conflicts with, with the Muck philosophy, honestly. Perhaps I haven't looked in depth to see how they conflict. I do like the philosophical forward-thinking that they're doing with energy, and I, I think it's a big gamble on their part, but I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of taking a look at, at these kinds of things. You know, if you happen to poop the bed with the whole thing, then it's going to cost you a bundle of money to change the whole thing around. I, I'd like to, I'm, I'm for the gamble.
I think at this time, I'd like to open it up to public input. I'm assuming you're done.
I'm done.
Yeah. So anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time?
Good evening, members of the planning board and others present, and thank you for your attention. My name is Erin Quintero. I live on Mount Erie Drive. A lifelong resident, I'm here tonight to speak some brief words in support of the proposed development at 500 Bakers Park, specifically building four at I Square. As you likely now understand, the residents of Arundacote powerfully support this property, and I Square has quickly grown in our hearts to the status of beloved institution. This never has been more clear than over the recent weeks, when we have come out repeatedly in droves to demonstrate this support. I would like to encapsulate this town sentiment for you tonight and to encourage you to act diligently in accordance with our shared vision for the future of Arundacote. As you know, for a community to be robust and healthy, it requires many elements: engaged citizens, strong leadership, connections and collaboration. It also needs a shared vision for the future, shared goals, priorities, and plans. At the heart of Arundacote, as it has always been, are people who care about the development of our youth and people who come together to celebrate with and to support each other. In countless ways, I Square has already shown that it supports our town's youth and offers everyone a place to connect and collaborate. We choose I Square for our celebrations, from birthdays to post-game treats to anniversary parties. We choose I Square for its events, from tap takeovers to holiday brunches to cooking classes. We run fundraisers there, we hold impromptu brainstorming sessions there, we meet up after parades there, we grab coffee after morning runs there, we even host out-of-towners there. I Square is woven into our daily lives in important ways, and I hope that your own stories are coming to mind as I speak with you now. With the proposed Imaginarium in building four, a project that will showcase and teach about art and sustainable energy, we will have so many more reasons to run, bike, walk, and drive up to I Square. I've taught high school students in the area for nineteen years. I'm also raising three children, ages eight to fifteen, and I can promise you that some of the most reliable predictors for their success and happiness are the qualities of curiosity, engagement, and an optimistic mindset. The proposed Imaginarium will offer those opportunities. It will offer hands-on learning experiences in art and science, experiences which will complement the high-quality instruction that our students receive in both town districts. Residents who visit, all residents who visit, will be inspired to wonder, to participate, to imagine a positive, sustainable future. The project at I Square, thanks to Mike and Wendy Nolan and their exemplary staff, in their own words, "is driven by a lifelong love of Arundacote." Well, I promise you, that love is mutual, and we all can't wait to see what they deliver next. For the health of our community and for the happiness of I-Towners from all over, please act in support of this request before you. Please act in support of the proposal at 400 Bakers Square, building four at I Square. Thank you.
My name is Ann Burns. I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive, and I'm here representing the community group Helping Arundacote Plan for Progress, the hip group. We've been working for the last almost twenty years on the thoughtful redevelopment of this area of our town. And we too admire and are thankful to the Nolans, because they have made I Square and created a four-corner destination in Arundacote. For the Imaginarium, we want this building and we want it to succeed, but we are concerned with the visual, visual and sound impact of these proposed wind turbines. As we noted in our written comments submitted last week, this is the equivalent of adding two ten-story buildings to this property, which was really never envisioned in the planning that led to the creation of the master plan, the design guidelines, and the zoning code for this area. To put these structures into perspective, St. Ann's home stands nine stories with a below-grade basement. These turbines would become the tallest structures in Arundacote, a distinction we believe is not appropriate for this location. I am the first person to support alternative energies. I'm on my third Prius. I love alternative energies, any kind of form, but this district is a visual district. It's about an experience. You know, and I'm, what we have tried to do in our group these last two weeks is find other options here. The mixed-use code calls for cell towers to be concealed, as Mr. Plukas pointed out, because of their visual impact. We believe these wind turbines fall into that same category. We believe the towers would significantly impact and alter the relaxed atmosphere that everybody has come to enjoy. The roof at the market at I Square, so many come and enjoy seek out an evening of meeting friends on a summer night. The roof at the Imaginarium will also not be an ideal location, either if the turbines are added, because of the noise and the visual of these tall structures planned for directly behind the Imaginarium. We would ask that these be scaled back or an alternative found. We support the geothermal, we, you know, totally support the, the solar aspect. These towers are just going to be too much. Also, in terms of the, the noise, and the noise source chart that was provided on exhibit F, along with the Bergy Excel information page, this particular brand of turbine, turbine appears to emit a low level of noise. And that's dependent on the large twelve-foot rotor blades being kept clean of atmospheric dust and dirt. We would like to know what arrangements will be made to ensure that the rotor blades are kept clean, the noise level lowered. If anybody has ever been to the Burn Cliff Golf Resort, it's near East Aurora in New York, near Buffalo, there's two wind turbines on the hill there, and they're, they put out a good amount of noise. And I don't think that's what people are looking for when they, they're sitting outside on a rooftop in a green space. You know, we understand this, you know, the desire to create the off-the-grid experience, but we don't want it at the expense of what has been worked so hard for this master plan, for this zoning code to be created. In addition, I would like to point out seeker requirements, and there are four categories that were not covered in the original I Square seeker application. Those four categories include visual impact, noise impact, the potential for killing migratory birds, and the cumulative effect the towers would have on the site. So we ask that those. effect the towers would have on the site. So we ask that those four categories of seeker also be reviewed. In addition, we pointed out in our first letter to the board and to the Nolans back in February, the building architecture. We'd sort of like to see something a little bit more unique. That was the, when the Nolans came together and started the design, they said that each of the buildings would be different and unique from each other. And we would ask that maybe these same bricks could be used in an alternative design that really showcases and makes this building show that it is state-of-the-art. My final comments relate to signage, which is not addressed here, but we ask that the planning board adhere to the master plan design guidelines for this mixed-use commercial district and mandate externally-lit signs for this building. In closing, I'd like to again share our appreciation for the fine work the Nolans and I Square are doing, but we cannot support the wind turbine piece of this alternative energy. All the other pieces we're fine with. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Tackich. I live at 127 Thorndike Road. I'm an architect, and so I just wanted to say to the Nolans that I am very appreciative of what you've done with our town. The only thing I want to add to what Anne said was that if you were to personify an Imaginarium, I would think that you would want to reflect what's today. And I just feel like the building reflects history, and it, the two just don't match. So I guess, I know that you've been down a long road designing. I know what it's like to be critiqued when you design something, but it seems like there's such an opportunity to have an amazingly creative and unique building to reflect what you're doing inside, and I just don't believe that it reflects that right now. It's a beautiful building that's been designed, no doubt, but I just don't think it reflects what's going on inside. That's my two cents. Thanks.
Don't have to, come on. Keep it moving.
All right.
Members of the planning board and the public, thank you for taking the time to listen to my brief talk. My name is David Keefe. I'm a resident of Cannon-Eggway, New York. However, I'm here representing the Genesee Region Clean Communities Organization, which is a local nonprofit coalition affiliated with the Department of Energy, and our mission is to promote strategies that reduce petroleum use. And we have worked with the I Square people. They've had, hosted several events there. One of those was an electric car event we had last September. Despite my attempts to try to give them money, they wouldn't take any and actually donated refreshments to us. So we have been very, very good partners. I'd like to say that the, in general, the I Square concept with the town center is a great idea, and specifically, the Imaginarium with its promotion of sustainability for the next generation is really a winner and really aligns with the things that we're doing. So I would, our organization is supportive of this project. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie DeCesar, and I reside at 160 Summershire Drive. I would like to respond to HIP's letter. With all due respect, they spent two weeks on their research. We have spent months and have consulted experts in this field, and we do not want to put something up that just looks good. As you can see at RIT where they have two wind turbines that look beautiful, unfortunately, they do not work. So we're not in this to put up something that is fake or is not useful. We're looking to do something that is real, that is helpful, that works. As far as the noise, keep in mind that we're dealing with a small wind turbine, not a wind farm that you hear about where they have issues with birds, where they have issues with noise. This is something very different. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so? If not, I'm going to close the public input portion. Thus closes the public input. I'd also like to note that we received comment from Alyssa Plough in favor of the project, and some comments from Ray McDonald, former planning board member regarding windmills and the visual impacts. Mike, I guess I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, or maybe you could address a couple of things. I mean, one of the things we heard was comparing the ambient noise of the windmill that was placed on a golf course versus the ambient noise that might be present in a suburban setting where we have an intersection relatively close, and how the two...
Yeah, it'd be different. I mean, your detection of the amount of noise on a golf course or in a rural or, you know, woodsy-type setting, I believe, would be, you know, greater in a lot of ways, but a grassy area is going to absorb a lot of that noise. So I'm not sure how to put a direct comparison without, you know, certainly not knowing...
Could you equate this to, unless it's a white noise or just an...
It is. It falls, it falls under the urban ambient noise levels. So I believe ambient is around fifty, and these fall in at forty-two. They refer to it as about the equivalent noise of a dishwasher. Of course, we'd have two, so it'd be the equivalent of two dishwashers. And, but in an urban, you know, semi, I feel we're in a semi-urban setting at I Square, and it certainly would be at or below the ambient level.
One of the other comments was made about this being similar to the nine-story St. Anne's building. Could you just make comment on how the...
Right. The, you know, the tower itself, for those who haven't, you know, to draw a direct comparison, is very similar to the height and diameter of the tower that comes up out of the back of the DPW building, right outside of these windows here. The height-wise, we would be about two-thirds the height of that, right where the first ring of cellular or antennas are on that tower out there. I drove by it several times since reading those comments, and I just can't imagine confusing that with a building. You know, it's just not, it's not a building. It's not like putting up two ten-story buildings. You just can't ever put those in the same context, or I couldn't anyway.
Also, what about the addition of glass or facade openness, as it would relate to your energy concepts, and how?
The, it's a balance. You know, glass is one of the worst insulators you can have, so a lot of glass lends itself to a lot of heat or temperature loss or gain from the outside. But it also helps on the natural lighting side, so that you don't need a lot of lighting to make your way through a building safely. So I, it kills me to run a lot of light when it's light outside. We got all we want. All we have to do is open the shades and not have to turn any light switches on would be certainly working toward our, you know, our goals.
Did you make consideration for more glass or openness during the design process?
We, the glass is, was a large consideration as far as the percentage, especially in the western front, to bring that in, because you bring in a lot of sunlight, a lot of, in some cases, unwanted heat into the building, and that was a very, very strong consideration when you do the building modeling. The exposure and the amount of glass are very, very, they're right up there with insulation as far as importance in our model, in our design.
I guess my last comment, I would, I do somewhat agree with Mr. Plukas. I also agree with the rest of, some of the other members of the board where, you know, I do think that the wind tower is something that's foreign to our market. I think your energy improvements are done even as close as Buffalo, more significantly than what we're doing here in Rochester, and that I think a lot of times these are new concepts that people are leery of. And, you know, I do think that there are probably some aesthetic trade-offs to having wind towers in that suburban, urban area. But I do agree that it's done in other parts of the country more prevalently than we are here, and you're probably on the forefront and therefore receiving some criticism for that because that probably is a somewhat visual impact. And I think that there's pros to the visual impact personally, as well as cons, in that people will see that from far away and wonder what that is as well as seeing it in some, you know, like Mr. Plukas said, there's, there's going to be lovers and haters. And for me, I don't know that that's enough to turn down the application, from my opinion, but I do think you're on the forefront of, you know, technology, and the technology is the trade-off to the aesthetic impact at this point, and that registers my opinion. Are there any other comments from the board regarding any of the testimony that we've heard, or any other comments that you have of the applicant?
Can I ask Mr. Nolan a clarifying question?
Certainly.
So in the workshop, we discussed the noise for one windmill versus two. And you made a comment just a second ago that, you know, it won't be one dishwasher, it'll be two. But I think in the workshop, when we were looking through the paperwork, that's not true. The noise won't be doubled.
It really technically wouldn't because you'd never be in a position like that because they are fifty or sixty feet apart. You'll never have the maximum noise from both of them in your ears at the exact same time. So really, you couldn't say it doubles. I didn't want to paint any brighter picture than that. That's all. I was trying not to open up something that...
Okay.
By saying, I just am saying it doubles, two dishwashers doesn't, you know, I'd rather say that and not, but I don't, I think that is a worst-case scenario, certainly.
Well, according to what you provided us, you said it's similar to a library, the noise in a library?
As far as the decibel level, yes.
And bird calls, and the lowest limit of urban ambient sound. But if you do double that, it becomes the sound of a jet engine, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
Actually, it doesn't. See, it's a, it's a log scale. So every time it doubles, it's ten, it's ten points. So even if it doubles, it goes from forty-two to fifty-two. And fifty-two is something more like, well, it says conversation at home, but that's, that can be other than a jet engine sometimes. So I'm not sure that that's a good comparison. But what I was looking at with this is even if it goes from in the forties to in the sixties, it goes to background music. As long as it's not, you know, elevator background music, that's not...
Right, right.
Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong about the seeker. We had, we had them complete a new seeker.
We, we did. So for this application, the applicant completed a long-form EAF and indicated that the only aspect of the I Square site development that had not been subject to a determination of significance were the wind turbines. And a small energy wind system is different than others, and so the issues that you need to look at are really pertaining to the system in hand or the, or the project in hand. And so those are the, that's how the application was reviewed from an environmental standpoint.
Do we have a determination written up for that one as well, or? I didn't see one.
Yeah, I'm, did I, was it on the packet? I'm sorry.
No, it's not in the packet. We have no seeker stuff up here right now.
Sorry.
It's okay. All right. So we are in receipt of the full environmental assessment form versus the short environmental assessment form. It has been updated, and as it pertains to the improvements relating to the wind turbine on-site, I think that, in general, when we reviewed this at the workshop and then reviewed this with staff, the only impact that we thought that there might be some impact on was noise, odor and light. And that, those impacts would be, would be small. We also found some consistency with the community character. There might be some impacts. And those, again, might, would be small, no or small impact. So does anyone have anything that they'd like to add or augment? So at this point, I'd like to just review the Part III evaluation. So some of the reasons that we might be supporting this determination would be that the project entails the redevelopment of opportunities, or, excuse me, properties included in I Square, and the only portion of the project not previously subject to a determination of significance under seeker is the addition of two small energy systems of turbines currently proposed in conjunction with the phase, this phase of the development. The project includes the construction of two hundred-and-seventeen-foot-tall wind turbines measured to the highest point of the tip of the blade on this previously developed site within the town of Arundicote. As a result, many of the impacts to natural features addressed under seeker do not apply to this project or these site conditions. The following issues were examined in detail as it related to seeker. Noise and light. The noise generated by the small energy system being proposed will not exceed the decibel level associated with the ambient sound of traffic in the area. There is no lighting proposed to the tower, and none is required under FAA regulations. The size and length of the blades will not produce strobe light, lighting effect. Now, the community character and aesthetic impact. Although the small wind energy system turbines will be the tallest structure in the immediate area, the scale and context of the nearby I Square buildings reduce any impacts associated with the height of the turbines. The wind turbine design and the proportional difference between the length of the turbine blade, twelve feet, and the height of the monopole, and base ninety-five feet minimizes the visual impact associated with this aspect of the project. Additionally, it is important to note that the proposed systems are designed to function effectively in urban settings and will be monitored and inspected on a regular basis. The wind turbines will contribute significantly to the building's achievement of net-zero status and serve as a model for other sustainable building projects in the town and the surrounding region. We are doing a single-agency review, and we would find this as an unlisted type, Part One, or, and unlisted actions for terms of seeker. Does anyone have any comments, questions or additions that they'd like to make? Do we feel that we can make a movement in regards to seeker?
Yeah, I think so. I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, regards to PB 1602. In regards to seeker, it's a, it's an unlisted action, and I move negative declaration.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Are we ready to make a motion in regards to revised site plan approval regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, if this passes, it goes before the zoning board for a variance?
Yes.
I'll do the motion.
Very good.
In regards to PB 1602-2, I move for approval upon the matter of request by I Square LLC for revised site plan approval for the construction of Building Four, a nine-thousand-square-foot building with parking lot, two small wind turbines and site-related improvements on premises, 400 Bakers Park in a mixed-use commercial district.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mary. Just by a split second, she got you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You said yes for seeker, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so this, this, this. Thank you for investing in Rondiquay.
Continuing to invest.
Continuing to invest, yes.
Where would you know?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Michelle, if you'd introduce our next...
Give me a minute.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1603-2. Upon the matter of request by Schultz Associates Engineers and Land Surveyors, acting as agent for Coo Investment LLC for revised site plan approval to operate a computer learning center on premises 1839 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
My name's Richard Radliff. I'm from Spearfish, South Dakota, here representing the computer learning center, so...
And I'm Bob Hatch with Schultz Associates, 129 South Union Street.
Inspect report?
Inspect report, yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, it's been kind of a long process because I'm not from the area, some kind of learning. So we're pretty much ready to go. We just need approval. And I know, I understand there's a lot of questions on what we're doing there. So I'm kind of here to kind of answer any questions you may have.
Why don't you just introduce what you're proposing to do there?
Okay.
Before we ask any questions.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's a place where individuals can come and learn about computers. It's a place where they can come and have fun while learning. It could be very minor to very, I don't know, more hard things, like anywhere from using a mouse to putting something on eBay to sell. We can teach them how to do spreadsheets and stuff like that. So it kind of depends on the person and what they want to learn. They also will, they have the option to learn how to type faster. It's a real fun hangout for people, too, because they have a good time while they're there. This particular location's going to be a test bed of, it's one of unusual type. So we really don't know how good or bad it will do.
So you offer organized classes or informal classes?
Informal.
So someone will come in and just say, I need to learn Microsoft Word and then...
Yes, sir.
And it's a fee for service?
Yes, sir.
Is it hourly or by class?
It's hourly, $6 an hour.
Um, and then you offer internet access just on a general basis or...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They can surf the internet. And it does have a filter on the computers where there can be no pornographic material or gambling, so...
Gambling?
Yes, sir.
And you have other installations similar to this around the country?
I do. They're, they're similar, but not exactly the same. They're more of internet cafes where people just come and surf the internet. The learning center is something new that we want to try because there's a, there's a big demand for it. There's a lot of people that want to learn about computers.
Um, what, what made you choose our market just for, I mean, how did you come upon this?
Uh, very carefully. I wanted to come to the New York State really bad and I did a lot of research and instead of going to the busy city, I wanted to go more of a quieter area. And that's why I picked this area.
You're the owner-operator of this?
No, sir. I just do the software and my company helps open them up. So I will not own the location.
And where are these other locations around the country predominantly?
Mostly down south. We have a few in Texas, Colorado, Michigan, outside the Flint area. So they're just kind of sporadic.
Do you do these installs for more than one owner or, I mean, this is one company or you only do, I mean, there are other companies that are doing this around the country?
Uh, there is. I don't know much about them. I just kind of do my own thing.
Okay. And how many seats are going to be available?
Um, 33. But I did get, I received a phone call about the parking and I heard that's an issue. So I'm sure that's something we'll discuss.
This time, Bernie, do you have any questions?
Um, thank you. Because at the workshop, we didn't have any of the background. So it was hard to figure out what was really going on.
Yes, sir. That's what he said and I apologize for that. I should probably come to that one.
So I'm just going to ask the question. So you said there's no gambling...
Correct.
...filter. So does that mean you can't get to a gambling site?
That's correct.
Or you can't...
Yes, sir.
...do games of chance on there? You can't do any of the things that are free?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yeah, they have filters.
You can't do anything that's a slot machine that, even though you're, it's not gambling? Um, I'm thinking some establishments put a machine on their bar and say it's for fun.
Yes, sir.
But it's actually for gambling.
Yes, sir. And if I might add, because it sounds like an internet cafe with sweepstakes and, and it's not a sweepstakes. So that probably answers your question. It's not a sweepstakes on-site.
I'm, I'm more concerned, how do we know that there's no, even though that you can't get to gambling software, how do you know there's no gambling going on on-site?
Uh, just it, it blocks it. The filter blocks it. It's tested. You can't go to gambling sites.
So I can't pull up a game and run it?
A game? What do you mean?
Solitaire.
Well, yeah. I mean, if you can get to it online, yes, because it's not gambling, you know, the gambling site...
So that's my point. You're saying that you don't have any gambling filters. That's if, if it's a game of chance.
Correct.
As far as you bet money and you get paid.
Correct.
But there's nothing that says you can't run a similar software that the site doesn't pay you, but something's going on at the site. What are the guarantees that nothing like that's going on at the site?
I guess I really don't have a guarantee on that. Because I mean, if somebody pulls something up that we don't know about and if it passes the filters, I mean, it, it probably could happen.
So five people could come there in an afternoon and bet against each other and there's nothing that would stop that? The code of the business, anything?
Nope. I mean, if they're doing it on-site, you know, I mean, like, say if you and I are watching something on TV and we say, I bet that's going to happen. And is that what you're saying? If we, you and I did a bet or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I mean, you can do that at McDonald's restaurant, I mean...
Okay.
Any other questions, Bernie?
No, those are my questions.
Mary?
Thank you, thank you.
Well, it's a little disturbing to know that you might have people doing that and you have no way of checking it out. You don't have anybody walking the floor or...
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have a floor attendant that would be walking around.
And how many place, uh, seats did you say you had?
Uh, 33.
Do you plan to fill them all at once?
No. It usually doesn't happen. And the reason why we do that, some people come in with groups, like three or four people, and some people might want to be by themselves. So we do that so they'll kind of, if they want to spread out a little bit for privacy, they can do that.
Okay. I guess I'm also concerned about that many people, if they did show up, the parking spaces, because I think it's limited down there.
Right.
Okay, that's all I got.
Michael?
Have you tried to predict the, the age brackets of those who would be coming to your place?
Yes, sir. We're predicting middle age and probably senior citizens. Usually during the day at my other locations, and aren't the learning center, but just the internet cafe, the daytime is usually the elderly comes in and at nighttime, more the younger crowd. When I say younger, I'd say 30s. It typically doesn't attract the, you know, the people in their 20s usually.
Hours of operation?
Uh, well, we wanted to start out from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM to kind of see, you know, how everything plays out and to see when we're going to be busy and when we're not.
Seven days?
Uh, Sundays closed.
I'm all set, thank you. You're going to take care of the parking?
Sir?
You're going to work on the parking?
Yes, sir.
Right now, we do, Carrie, I mean, before I continue around the room, I might as well stop and me, we, we have a, we're showing a deficiency in proposed, I mean, proposed uses as equates to existing parking on-site.
I'm sorry, I was shuffling the papers while you were speaking. I apologize. Based on the, the calculation, they would need a, a variance for parking.
Was, was the site in compliance before this application?
Yes.
This application is more intense than the prior use?
So the change of, the, the, the use has a different parking calculation based on the number of stations. And that's how the, how the parking requirement is determined. And so with the, based on the number of stations, that now kicks the parking requirement up, accordingly.
So this applicant, applicant will have to get a variance for parking in order to use it to their best effect?
Uh, correct. Based on the, the current calculation. We just received this from the applicant today. But yes, so they would need to obtain a zoning variance for parking.
Would they have 35 spots, Peter?
No.
Would you have 35 customers? Are there 35 people in your place?
I mean, technically, it's possible, but not likely.
So he needs 35 spots.
And then this, this parcel has other uses located, other businesses. And so that's, when we look at the site capacity for parking or the site, we're looking at all of the uses in conjunct, altogether combined. And so, uh, based on the analysis provided by the applicant, the, the total existing or the total use or requested would be 47, what's provided is 41. So they would need the variance.
So working the math backwards, they'd be allowed to have fewer workstations?
So, yeah, so...
Without a variance?
So it's, um, the, it's a, for, it's three spaces for every workstation, I believe. And yes, one, one for every three customers. And the customer is based on the number of state, you know, the number of computers or stations. And so with 33 divided by the three was 11. So that's where the 11 parking spaces for that...
But what I'm saying is that...
If it was fewer, if there were fewer...
There's six spaces that are deficient, is the deficiency. That would equate to...
18.
18 fewer workstations if, I mean, they could operate with 15 workstations until they got a variance?
Correct. There, just to note, there's also a special use permit required for this use that'll be going to the town board at their April meeting. The public hearing for that will be at the April meeting.
So in order for this to be allowed, there's a special use permit and now a variance?
Correct.
Right. Do you have something?
Well, I just haven't put it together. There are two other businesses on-site.
Sorry.
Perfection Vapes, Jan Nails, Delphi Drug and Alcohol Counseling, and Liberty Granite.
Nice, nice. And there's a total of how many spaces? 41?
Forty, um, 41 are currently provided on-site.
Kimmy?
Um, thank you for coming. I'm just curious, when you were doing your research, were you aware that we just recently built a new library here in our community? We just built a beautiful, big library. It's actually outside the doors. And that facility offers a lot of the same kinds of expertise and support that you're offering. But it's free because it's at the library. And you mentioned seniors being probably a target audience for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So is it pretty easily accessible, this facility? Say if you had a walker or a cane or a wheelchair?
I, I believe so. I believe so. It, it has two entrances, one in the back and one in the front. And I believe the one in the back would probably be the safer door to go through.
And I know there was some talk about how filtered the gambling sites would be. So I would also have some questions because you're just down the road a piece from a school.
Sure, absolutely.
How filtered the pornography would be and who determines what is or isn't pornography?
Um, yeah, we, we have had it tested. I'm not, I don't know too much about it because usually we don't have that problem. But I do know that we have tested it and it's, it knocks a lot of things out. It's not pornography. It kind of aggravates you because you'll try to go to the site and it won't let you. So it's kind of filtered a little high, higher than what it's supposed to be. But we do have somebody that walks around and it's not tolerated if that goes through.
Just, just to pick up on Kimmy a little bit, my biggest issue was with the business plan. I mean, 15 years ago, I think this was a great idea. I don't, I don't understand how it's going to be successful now where so many people have computers in their homes. But that's not really for us to, to determine. So I, I don't have any questions beyond just being concerned about the viability of it.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Okay.
To me or them?
Sure. I, my, my comments were just that I'm more concerned about the viability of the business plan versus any, any technical things we have to review. And unfortunately, the viability of the business plan isn't something we can really consider. I think 15 years ago, this might have been a great idea. I'm concerned about how many people want to leave their homes and, or leave the library and, and go up to Ridge Road to work on a computer. So I, I guess I just don't understand it, but...
It's definitely going to be a test bed and we really do not know how we will do in the city, to be honest with you.
Jay?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
This time, I'd like to open up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, members of the town board. I'm Mark Bean. I'm a sergeant with the Rondiquay Police Department. I addressed a memo to you guys regarding the application of the open, to open a Hot Spots Learning Center at the 1839 East Ridge Road. This site has been, that storefront has been vacant the last several years. The commercial plaza consists of two separate properties, 1839 and 1845. Over the last two years, 2014 and 2015, the location's been a subject of numerous complaints stemming from parking issues between the, between the two businesses. In those two years, 14 different incidences were called into the police department, where required officers to respond to the location stemming from issues all the way from vehicles being towed, parking spots being plowed in, signage being removed, and chains that the separated parking areas being destroyed. With that, we would just like you guys to consider some of the ramifications that are, that we're looking at and making sure that there is adequate parking spots so that the police department is not being overburdened with this type of complaint there when this comes.
I'm just wondering, since you're here and maybe you do or you don't have any, I mean, are you aware of this type of business, having any nefarious activities associated? I mean, is there anything we should be concerned about that the police department may know about that we don't? That, trends or things in other markets that we're...
Um, I think that we've addressed it with them to, to make sure that they're familiar with our local law as well as the New York State penal law, which involves the, the games of chance, sweepstakes and operating those things. We are, will be supplying the town board as well as the company with those laws and regulations to make sure that they fully understand those. We have had other things in the past, but according to what we've just heard, it's not the same.
Right, okay.
So, you know, that, I don't think that we can, I can base, based upon that if they're telling me they're not doing what the other places did.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else from the public wishing to speak in regards to this application? Seeing none, close the public input of this. I guess before we start, I am concerned about parking also. And now in light of the fact, I mean, we did ask two weeks ago for parking information. We just received it, dated today. I think that the parking also is substandard there and with the testimony of the police stating that parking has been an issue there and knowing that we need a variance, I think that we should consider perhaps tabling this application until a variance is issued, if anyone is in disagreement of that. No.
I make a motion we table?
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I think at this point, we're going to table your application if you didn't understand what I just said, until you get a variance and a special use permit at this point. I think parking is an issue on this site. If you look at the maps that we received from the engineers, that parking is substandard as it is with the clearances for head-to-head accessibility the way it is. And unfortunately for you, we did talk about this two weeks ago. You weren't here and you're...
Yes, sir.
And I do think that that is something that is fairly important to our site plan review.
Yes, sir.
So let's get the zoning issues resolved and then hopefully it'll be an easy approval at a later date.
Excuse me, Chairman. May I just interrupt just with one comment? That the board was also supposed to be contemplating the special use permit referral from the town board. And so they'll be looking for that, they'll be looking for this board's referral on the special use per... special use permit. The item will go before the town board at their April, their April town board meeting. There's, that's the night of the public hearing.
Do I have a separate record of motions for that or is it all in one?
There's a separate one.
Sir. Wow.
Did you get a raise?
Oh, it's the last thing on the engine. Yeah, okay, that's why it's-
It's just the referral.
All right, so let's talk, I mean, a little bit about this. I have a neutral opinion. I mean, I think it's good to fill a business. I'm presuming that this is going to be a successful business. I do think that they've answered any questions that we have about their activities. You know, I do question, as Mr. Palukas has, about the viability, but I don't know if that's for us. I think that's for the town board to determine that's the nature of the special use permit. That being said, I mean, we're being asked to have a positive or negative referral. There's no neutral referral or none.
So if we can't vote neutral, does that mean we have to vote negative if you really can't vote positive?
We're checking the code real quick just to make sure what the, find out what your options are.
Jay, while you were gone, just to bring you up to speed, the last item on the agenda is related to this application, or second to last, I should say, regarding the referral to the town board for the special use permit. Right now, we're discussing that we're somewhat ambivalent or neutral as to whether a positive or negative referral should be given to the town board.
Well, I mean, if you're going by the business, it doesn't really matter whether it's going to be successful or not. We can't be the judge of that.
I mean, I think in general, I'm positively in favor of businesses occupying rentable space.
Right, right. And the only reason that we have an issue with parking right now is because the use change required a different calculation for the number of parking spaces required. And so I, you know, I'm not, I'm fine with going forward with it. I don't think it's a big issue to go forward with it. I don't know that we need to table it because if it needs to go to the, I will table it. I am ambivalent about tabling. I can tell you that. But the thing is, is that if we table it, great. If we don't, if we vote on it, we can, it's going to be subject to zoning approval anyway for the variance with respect to parking.
Well, thank you for bringing that back up, but we did make a motion to table.
I know. We can lift it from the table, too.
But I don't know. I think parking, you know, if there's an issue with parking, it's going to change the site plan, which is what we have to review.
We know there's an issue.
And we know there's an issue, so.
Okay. That makes sense then.
Yeah.
I guess as far as the town board referral, you've changed my mind a bit about positive referral. Bernie?
I'm a negative.
Negative referral? Mary?
The name alone, I'm negative.
I'm okay with the referral.
Negative.
I'm okay with it, but. So it's four to, I'm ambivalent.
Four to two to one.
Four to two to one.
You didn't give us that option.
I'm positive. So it still loses. Anything still flipping papers, pages?
I want to say that the, I have to find the particular code provision, but I want to say that when you're issuing a recommendation on a special permit to the town board, that it's a, the technical requirement is for you to issue a report. I don't know that you have to say that you are recommending approval or denial. It can be more a report of your comments, but I just want to confirm that by finding the exact requirement under the code for where you need to make the referral.
Well, if we don't have to say positive or negative, I think we're all like-minded in that we have concerns about the operation. We do like the fact that the building would be occupied by a viable, hopefully viable business, but we question the parking and-
Is that what we'll include in the report?
We're writing the report right now under the, I think it's the condition suggestion is our report.
Then I'm okay with that.
I'm going to write something here just quickly and then I'll read it back and see if people-
Okay.
board or the referral from the planning board. The town board just needs to have the planning board's comment as it contemplates its own decision.
All right. What I've said here is the board feels that filling a vacant storefront with a new business is a positive improvement to the property. Testimony from IPD has shown ongoing parking issues and that the use indicates the site will have parking deficiencies. Do we need to say more?
No, the rest is for the town board. I think that's fair.
Is that an adequate report, attorneys?
They ask for opinion. They ask for opinion, your answer or not?
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion in that regard?
So all we're doing is opinion?
I'll make a motion to Peter, what he just read.
All right.
I'll second it.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you and good luck. Hopefully you'll be investing in Aranacoit.
Thank you for everybody's time. I really appreciate it.
Sure, the moment you've all been waiting for.
Do any windows open?
What?
Any air in this room?
There's a lot of hot air here.
Yeah.
I think they're all locked, so then there's no jumpers. Jay, turn on-
If you push that button, console right there, turn green, that'll turn the air conditioning on.
Or the heat. All right, Michelle, if you'd like to, if you could introduce our next.
Yes, they have a video presentation as well, PowerPoint presentation that they're going to show. So we've reserved some seats for the board members.
All right, then you'll introduce it and then we'll move to the seats. The presentation will ensue and then we'll return to our seats.
Perfect.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, case number PB one six zero three dash three. Upon the matter of request by Landtech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates for preliminary final site plan approval, Woodlot Environmental Protection Overlay District Permit and Flood Plane EPod Permit to construct a one hundred and thirty-five unit multifamily apartment development compromised of two four-story, fifty-four multifamily slash apartment unit buildings with ground level parking and one three-story, twenty-seven multifamily slash apartment unit building, a two-story clubhouse with pool and site-related improvements on premises nine five one and ten twenty-seven Thomas Avenue and forty-five Pattonwood Drive in a River Harbor district.
Do you want to start like this or do you want us to go to the seats?
Maybe, why don't you go to the seats and we'll proceed. Can we bring down the screen or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right.
Because I want to check the tape. Did everybody see?
Yeah.
My name is Alan Knopf. I'm an attorney with Knopf Shaw. We represent the developer, Lighthouse Point Property Associates LLC. I'm here with the developers, the partners in Lighthouse Point, Charles Morgan, Joe Catalani, Alan Adams. Gordon Howe could not be there and I am also a partner in the development. John Sharaba from Landtech, our planning consultant, is here tonight. We would like to give you a little information about the development. Lighthouse Point just would be a great development for Aranacoit and for this community. It will, let me see if this, whoop, hold on, sorry. All right, there we go. We're going to develop a hundred and thirty-five unit multifamily luxury residential project, apartments on about five point five acres solely in the town of Aranacoit. The first phase will be to construct fifty-four units and the deck parking and the primary access in from Thomas Avenue. Later on, in the second phase, we would construct another fifty-four units and additional parking. The third phase would be a twenty-seven unit building and remaining parking areas. The buildings generally will be four stories on top of a garage, so podium parking. This is a great project because what we're going to do is remediate a contaminated property and turn it into a green development. There's historic landfilling has created widespread contamination in this area. The site was admitted to the New York State Brownfield Cleanup Program. We've done extensive testing. Contamination includes heavy metals, PAHs, which are basically semi-volatiles. We have had a hit of dioxin. The soil gas has indicated some volatile chlorinated organics as well as methane, which is from degradation of garbage. Basically, this was marshland, was filled in over the years with waste, more industrial waste in this area and construction demolition debris, et cetera. With our remediation, or excuse me, with our investigation, we presented a remedial plan to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The plan would be a track four cleanup, which allows restricted residential uses, which would be multifamily, does not allow single-family detached for this type of cleanup, also would allow commercial uses. As you know, the project is, the area is zoned River Harbor in nineteen ninety-nine under the Pattonwood Plan, called for multifamily development here. The River Harbor zoning was enacted in nineteen ninety-nine after generic EIS determined that's the sort of development that Aranacoit wanted in this location. The recent comprehensive plan update called for high-density development specifically discussing the lighthouse development. So the project's going to complete, going to create some real community benefits for housing, transportation, recreation, the environment. And we feel that in synergy with the project across the river at Sherlot, create a critical mass to make the port a destination, leading to significant economic development in our community. We feel that Rochester just has not taken care of, or excuse me, has not taken advantage of the waterfront. You know, here we are on the Great Lakes, a few of us, I grew up, I had a cottage on Lake Ontario, but not many people had that advantage. Most people don't get to down to the waterfront. This is one step towards trying to open up the waterfront. So this is what the waterfront looks like now, largely, largely vacant. This is a city-owned property along, adjacent to the Aranacoit land that we're planning to develop. This is looking down on the site. As you can see, it's largely undeveloped. This is from the adjoining neighborhood, looking down. As you see, there's an area of, a screened area of trees along the old railroad right-of-way, looking down on the site. Again, another shot from Beacon Field, looking towards the, towards the river. As you can see, there's a dense area of trees. This is the site plan that's been presented to the board. The building at the top is the one hundred and eight units, two fifty-four unit buildings. And behind it, the pool underneath would be the parking. And in the front, a three-story on top of parking, twenty-seven unit building. There'd be a one lane in and two lanes out to Thomas Avenue for access. This is the, whoops. Okay, thank you, sorry. So right now, there are several parcels that we are acquiring from the Gilbert family. The front parcel, about one point two acres, this is three point seven acres where the larger buildings would go. This triangular piece is actually in the city of Rochester. And this piece up here is in the city of Rochester. We would not be developing, even though there's unlimited density and height in the city of Rochester, we would be leaving the parcel next to the residences that join the railroad right away. We would not be building on that parcel. So as to provide more of a buffer, even though in the city, we really don't have any specific development limits, we would concentrate further back in the town. Here's the, John Sharaba later will give you some more specifics on the plans and the grading. Here's the grading plan. The backs of the main parking lots are permeable pavement, so in order, some of the measures we're taking as a green development is the permeable pavement so as to lessen the storm order runoff. There is an EPod, as you know, that's been somewhat contentious with the present owner, Mr. Gilbert. This was mapped by the town. We understand Mr. Gilbert is contesting this. However, we have applied for an EPod permit. We will be putting in, most of those trees are gone except up by the railroad bed. And we would be putting in extensive tree landscaping and new trees. We are, based on comments from the planning board, we are preparing a more detailed landscape plan with, we've retained Heinrich Fischer, landscape architect. We will be submitting an additional landscape plan to the board. We understand that you have not yet designated secret lead agencies, so you really can't make any decisions tonight. So we fully expect to be here again next month to discuss this. Also, we do have to go to the zoning board for a variance for a couple of things. One is for density and- So, we fully expect to be here again next month to discuss this. Also, we do have to go to the zoning board for a variance for a couple of things. One is for density, and we actually have a setback variance we need from our own lot. Originally, that was scheduled for next Monday night, but I think either because Syracuse is playing in the basketball game that night, or for other reasons, it's going to be put off until May, the hearing on that, that measure. Here are some views of the, of the development. This is looking towards the lake. This is straight on from Thomas Avenue, from the mini storage, looking right into the main entrance to the, to the project. From the, from the northwest, looking basically from the, from the bridge over towards the project. And as you see, the, unfortunately, the, well, the, this is really from the, from the, more from the air on top of the bridge, looking, looking down. And this is from the adjoining neighborhood, from Beacon Field, looking, really in the air, or Beacon View, I'm sorry, sorry, looking at the, down towards the project, but this would be quite a ways up in the air from a drone or whatever, not from the, not from the ground. So, if, maybe we could turn the light back on for a second here, and then I'll hand it over to John.
Oh, if you leave it up, you want?
Well, I can't, wow.
Go back to the site.
Yeah, John, if you want to. What did I do? Whoop, hit it wrong, sorry. Got it. Oh, all right, there we go.
This is John Sharaba from Land Tech, and I think Alan did an excellent job giving an overview of the project itself, so I really can't give you too much more information, but I will kind of go give you a quick overview of the utilities. We will be accessing gas and electric and water from Thomas Avenue. We're also accessing sanitary sewer from a manhole that exists on Thomas Avenue on the east side, and we'll be installing a sanitary force main and lift station. The lift station will be located kind of the southern parking lot on the west end. That lift station will be sized to handle this development and future development if that is to occur. Stormwater is a big concern in projects like this, or any project nowadays. We are going to have to be a Phase Two compliant. That means we're going to have to get a DEC permit for this project. We are going to use green practices, including biofilters, porous pavement, as Alan has said, underground storage of water, even cisterns on this project. Those are, those details are on these plans and have been submitted to the town engineer for review. Alan mentioned the access. We have one access in, two out, and that's, we've also submitted a traffic study prepared late last fall regarding this project by SRF Associates, and that traffic study took that into account and works for the road system, as they noted in their traffic study. The other elements of the project are grading. We have a grading plan that details the height of each building, the garage elevations along with the first floor, or the promenade area where the pool is, and all the other heights. The site is adjacent to the railroad bed, and that's an important feature because that's a private property. That's owned by CSX currently. We cannot touch any of the trees that are in there. We're not proposing to do any off-site grading off our property. Adjacent to the right-of-way of CSX, north and adjacent, is a sixty-two inch, or excuse me, seventy-two inch, six-foot diameter, concrete storm pipe that basically takes the storm runoff from Thomas Avenue, Eaton Road, and discharges it to the Genesee River. So, we will, our storm runoff will connect to that pipe, as our plans show. We've submitted our stormwater calculations to the town engineer for review, and he has reviewed the preliminary plans. We have received comments from the town engineer, La Bella. We went through those comments. They're very technical in nature. I don't see any stove stoppers related to their comments. They, they want some more detail, and this is a perfect point to give them more detail. The plan that you see before you is a culmination of a year of effort from my clients, myself, other architects and other people to prepare this. And the town, we've met with the town staff several times, the planning board at least three times under sketch plan, soliciting information and feedback. We've met with the neighbors. We've had a public information meeting to give them some time to, to give some input on the project. And frankly, I'm looking forward to tonight's meeting to get some more information from the neighbors. And I hope the planning board can, can glean some details from their comments related to buffering and things like that, because that's really what we're looking at. As Mr. Knopf has said, this, this apartment project isn't allowed use in this zoning district. So, as the site engineer, I'm looking for feedback from the neighbors on how to make this better for them if this moves forward. And that's really all I have for an overview, and look forward to taking questions later.
Good? Good?
Should we take our seats then?
Yeah. Yeah. Alan, do you have that quick?
Alan? I'm, oh, we got it. Never mind. Sorry. Thank you.
Sure.
Just give everyone a minute to sit down and get situated.
What?
Just going to pause for a moment while one of the board members takes a moment.
Just going to wait one more moment. All right, well, Michael's walking in. Just to summarize a little bit, tonight, we are just getting a preliminary presentation from the applicant, and then we are asking for public input. We will not be closing the public input portion, so at future phases, there will be still time for public input. But what the applicant felt that would be important to do would be to get a preliminary reading from the public as to what may or may not affect their development through the comments made by everyone here in the room. I will ask that, you know, everyone's free to express themselves in any way, shape, or form. We realize that traffic is something that needs to be studied, density, green space, environmental impact, there's a lot of issues with the brown field, that all of those things will be something that we take strict look at in the future, and very depth, in-depth review of those things. So, we take those very seriously. And at this, you can continue your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
If you're not done, but?
Yeah, well, I pretty much covered what I was going to cover, although I couldn't see my notes in the dark, but I think I, I covered it. But Joe Catalani from our, our team is going to make a presentation. Joe is a, the, the broker for CB, for Park Avenue Realtors, and he's going to make a short presentation.
Hi, Joe Catalani, 136 Shore Drive. Alan has probably covered most of this, so I'll just give a brief note to you. Although I am one of the developers, I am also a lifetime resident of Aranacoyte. In this project, I saw an opportunity to provide a very much needed element to our town, the second-largest town in the county. So, let's talk about need. These are luxury apartments. In our neighboring town of Grease, they have fourteen new luxury apartment buildings. In Webster, they have almost a dozen. The one, the newest one going up in Penfield is three hundred and fifty units. They are building these things not because they want to, to build things. They're building it because there's a need for it. So, what are they doing? They're watching trends. The real estate trends have changed in a big way. When we were kids, five or six kids was not unheard of, now it's one or two children. The house dynamic has changed. It's gone from big homes to smaller, more modest homes. It has also increased in luxury apartments in a big way. What's happening now is the millennials don't buy a house until they're thirty-five years old. These folks have great incomes, and then you have retirees that are selling their homes, downsizing both for economics and maintenance reasons, and renting these. This is who is renting these units. There's a huge need for them. So, Grease has fourteen right now, Webster has almost a dozen, Aranacoyte has zero. The second-largest town in the county has zero. So, you say, yeah, that's great, that's great. Okay. So anyways, excuse me, you'll have your turn. So, the, these, these millennials, when, when they come in, they're your children that are living in here. When, when they look for a place to live, or when these retirees decide that they want to sell their home, get rid of these burdens, where do they go? To Ridge Road to live in a nineteen-sixties unit? They don't. They go to Webster and they go to Grease. They don't stay here. And you're losing a valuable asset. Now, you can say, does this make a difference? The loss economically definitely makes a difference. From buying groceries, to visiting cafes, to buying furniture, to buying paint, these people are leaving the area because we don't have it to offer. We can always do it later. We can't always do it later. As you know, Aranacoyte is almost a hundred percent developed. There's no land left to do something like this, and if it's not done, you're going to miss it, and you won't have any luxury apartments ever. The, this particular, this particular project, the viability of it, the only reason this type of development can be built today is because of a lucrative brownfield cleanup program. This program that we are engaged with does, no longer exists. So, and it's, it's no longer available to other developers. So, when that brownfield credit expires, most likely so does any viability of having luxury apartments in Aranacoyte. In addition, I mean, circle, to circle back, we're taking a landfill off the books, we're repurposing the land with much-needed stock. Our master plan calls for this. They knew ten, fifteen years ago that we needed this, and no one did anything. Well, now it's almost time, it's almost too late. There's no land left. This is it. This is why they designated this area for this type of housing. He's already covered that. You know, there's opposition. There's opposition to every, to every development that I've ever known. I have copies of the Beacon View, you know, opposition papers where they've, where they've, you know, they have seventy-nine homes and a hundred and twenty people that are against this project in a town of fifty-two thousand. Now, in those seventy-two, seventy-nine homes, where they got their signatures of a hundred and twenty, those streets alone that they canvass have eight hundred and twenty-seven homes. They got seventy-nine. I'm surprised they didn't get a hundred percent. You have copies of what they sent out. They speak to twenty percent in decreased values of housing without any substantiation, higher traffic, higher crime rate. All of these are proven to be totally inaccurate. You have studies that we have supplied for you. In fact, the opposite occurs. That is not what occurs whatsoever, but just throw it out there and see what comes to you. That's what's happened. And you have the studies, we've done the traffic studies, the crime actually is stable or decreased when these units are built. Home values do not drop twenty percent, in fact, they increase. Lastly, floating a note that this was a low-income housing project, you know, I thought was, you know, kind of unfair. These units are a thousand dollars for a one-bedroom, thirteen fifty for a two-bedroom. They're hardly going to generate low-income housing. As far as, and the thought is, is that the project is going to fail, and thus, it's going to turn to this. Well, with fourteen projects on one side of us and twelve projects on the other, some with units of three hundred and fifty count, I'm sure Aranacoyte can fill a hundred and thirty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Morgan, one of the other members of the development team, is going to briefly discuss the development.
It's been a long night, I'll be brief. I've been working on this, on this development for over twelve years. I grew up a mile from this site. Went to grammar school at Holy Cross, used to walk across the Stossen Street Bridge to go to the theater where the Rite Aid now sits. Our development team consists of local members of the community who grew up in Grease, Aranacoyte, Sherlot, people who believe in this town and this area, have invested money and prepared to invest significant dollars in this town. We've overcome several obstacles during this time, including a four-year court battle with the New York State to get into the brownfield cleanup program, complying with the DEC protocol and cleaning up the, on testing and retesting the site, and continuing to fund the development during the biggest economic downturn since the Great Depression, and the sudden death of my father, who was the lead developer on this project. We're going to take an environmentally challenged site that is a blight to this community, and we're going to make it an upscale asset to this community. Want to thank the board for their thoughts and recommendations, the people here in support of the project, and the people here that oppose the project and with concerns. We share in your passion for this town. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. That, that really concludes our presentation. Again, we just think this is a great project for the town of Aranacoyte, and we do want to hear comments, and, you know, we underst, we've made adjustments to the project in response to the board's comments, and we're ready to continue to take suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open it up to public input. I would again ask everyone to be respectful of everyone's opinions and try to be as brief as possible so as many people could speak in this regard to this matter.
My name is Robert Quitt. I live at one fifty-five Portview Circle. At least it currently has a port view, which is in the Harbor Hill area, just uphill from this area. I think it's great that there's a vision like this for development. However, there's several shortcomings that really turned me off completely. And the one major fault that I find with it is access to Thomas Avenue. I do not believe that you can have traffic to, into this development onto Thomas Avenue. I believe that what you have to do is gain access through Marina Drive underneath the bridge and come out at the traffic light across from Hermos Plaza. I'm also concerned with the height of these buildings. I think one story less would be acceptable to me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Catalani. I'm a resident of Aranacoyte. I've been following this project, and I'm in support of it. I think it would be a great asset to our community, and I like that it has a lot of healthful options as well for people that would be living there and around there. So, I just wanted to say I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Mudge. I reside at eighty, eighty Beacon View Court, and I'd like to open up with a petition that I, I think Mr. Catalani responded to. I personally conducted the petition.
Can you address the microphone, please?
Excuse me. I personally conducted the petition. It covered Thomas Avenue, Smugglers Lane, Beacon View, Eaton Road, and Pattonwood. It was a face-to-face visit. Not everybody was home. It took a great amount of time and effort. I didn't do all those streets because I just didn't have I think it's great that there's a vision like this for development. However, there's several shortcomings that really turned me off completely. And the, the one major fault that I find with it is access to Thomas Avenue. I do not believe that you can have traffic to, into this development onto Thomas Avenue. I believe that what you have to do is gain access through Marina Drive underneath the bridge and come out at the traffic light across from Hermos Plaza. I'm also concerned with the height of these buildings. I think one story less would be acceptable to me. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sue Catalani. I'm a resident of Arandakoi. I've been following this project, and I'm in support of it. I think it would be a great asset to our community, and I like that it has a lot of healthful options as well for people that would be living there and around there. So I just wanted to say I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Mudge. I reside at eighty, eighty Beacon View Court. And I'd like to open up with a petition that I, I think Mr. Catalani responded to. I personally conducted the-
Can you address the microphone, please?
Excuse me. I personally conducted the petition. It covered Thomas Avenue, Smugglers Lane, Beacon View, Eaton Road, and Pattonwood. It was a face-to-face visit. Not everybody was home. It took a great amount of time and effort. I didn't do all those streets because I just didn't have enough time. But what little time I had, I collected a hundred and twenty, I contacted, contacted a hundred and twenty residents living on those streets. Now, majority of individuals opposed, ninety percent of the people that I contacted, that's a hundred and fifteen, opposed this project. They don't want a massive one hundred and thirty-five apartment complex. Without resistance, it was so easy. And the ones that didn't sign it said, well, let me think about it. Okay. Now, I've reside, I have resided in the Beacon View and Smugglers Lane area since nineteen-eighty and care very much about the neighborhood, especially the residential character of the River Harbor District. Since I have learned more about the Lighthouse Project over the last year, I am very convinced the project would be detrimental to the town, to the neighborhood, and to the public. Now, I understand that you're not the lead agency at this time, but if, if you are deemed to be the lead agency, I am going to implore you and encourage you to take the following action. Number one, require an environmental impact study with public input. And deny the permits for the woodlot and floodplain EPods and zoning variances, including the required minimum lot size. My justifications? Number one, too far many apartment units. The proposed building lot is undersized per the zoning code. Number two, this project does not meet the requirements of the town's master plan dated nineteen ninety-nine. Three, the site is a contaminated fill site. The impacts of that cannot be fully evaluated without an environmental impact study with public input. Taking the word of the developer that one is not necessary would be a foolish move. Four, the architectural drawings appear more suitable for Florida, not for Arandakoi, New York. The neighbors are very concerned home values will drop dramatically. The massive buildings would tower over the neighborhood. Personally speaking, my house at eighty Beacon View Court has been appraised and has had a walkthrough by two realtors, two large competitors of Mr. Catalani's firm, Nodnagle and Remax. And they both said the same, decreased values highly likely. Now, I'm gonna rely on these two licensed individuals. Number six, excessive road traffic. Traffic now backs up constantly in the summer to the top of Thomas and Pattonwood to St. Paul Boulevard, not only during the summertime, but during the normal working hours, morning and evening. Seven, the Arandakoi seniors do not want expensive luxurious apartments, as claimed by Lighthouse Point. Let's dispel that. On the contrary, seniors want assisted living or affordable paddy homes if they cannot afford their own personal homes, according to the Arandakoi-sponsored study report published this past month and presented to the residents at the library on March tenth. Eight, decreased quality of life from excessive noise and light pollution. Number nine, reduces public access to the Marina and Trails and obstructs the river, the riverfront view. Many, many times, seven days a week, from early morning until nighttime, we see people walking, enjoying their boats, relaxing. It's like a vacation away from home. To deprive them of river scene and public access that reduces the accessibility, it's wrong. It's the public's. This is just not Beacon View. Let's, I wanna dispel that right now. This project won't be in my backyard. And so I do take the public's interest at heart. I'm concerned that they need to have access to the waterway and the trails. Number ten, detrimental to humans, wildlife, woodlands, and the environment. In summary, I trust the planning board will use their authoritative power to wisely use and protect the town's remaining natural setting, environment, and preserve the established residential character of the River Harbor District. Specifically, require, in the future, if it comes before this board, require an environmental impact study with public input, and deny the permits for the woodlot, floodplain EPods, and zoning code variances, including the required minimum lot size.
Okay, there was, there's about five minutes there, so.
Somebody say something?
I did. I said, that's about five minutes there.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comment. I'm Catherine Reeves. I was born and raised in Arandakoi. I no longer live there. I live in Fairport, but I often return to Arandakoi because of the harbor view and because of the river trails. And as was mentioned, they're in scarce availability, and it's one thing that brings me and my visitors to New York State, to the area, to your area, to Arandakoi. There's a lot of emotion surrounding this, and there's only one way to take the emotion out of this, and that would be to have a positive declaration to Seeker, to require an environmental impact assessment. And I say that not only because of my memories of Arandakoi, my, my current experience with it, it's also based on my profession. For over twenty-five years, I've been employed in the environment, health, safety, and sustainability profession, responsible for compliance with New York, New York State D E C regulations, for environmental real estate assessments, for OSHA Right to Know compliance. And it is on that that I encourage you to make a positive declaration to Seeker. Now, the application has stated they want to have a green development. Then I believe the applicant would agree, then it is only fitting to have a full environmental impact assessment, to know, manage by fact, the risks that are present. The application has insufficient information to understand the potential impacts to the environment and to the human, human health. That was stated, that it was a landfill site. Let's not make light of it, industrial landfill, but it dates back to the nineteen forties, long before we had the Environmental Protection Agency or we had environmental regulations. There was probably electronic waste disposed, chemicals, and that's why sampling shows that there are volatile organic compounds, including benzene and tralchlorothane, known carcinogens, as well as heavy metal concentrations. To not do an environmental impact assess, assessment would just be poor practice as a professional. We would require that, and it would be unconscionable to not do such, and to make that available to the public for comment. Second of all, we don't really know the impact of the stormwater runoff on the Genesee River and the six environmental protection overlay districts that includes wetlands and floodplains. Now, there is a SWP, a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan that's mentioned, that's gonna address the construction site, but what about after the construction? We need to know what the impact is. Traffic study requires, should be subject to independent review, as was mentioned time and time again. And I also wanna point out that the application is inconsistent with your town zoning requirements. It's also missing information to properly evaluate conformance with your zoning requirements as well as the community design standard and the guidelines still in question. Most concerning, the density variance that'll be required. You set the density limit for good reason. You know, we talk about the density, high, highly populated density of foreign countries, right? China and Japan, well, now we have it in our backyard. And gone will be that open space that myself and so many others have come to enjoy. So just to wrap up, I ask you to make a positive declaration to Seeker of the quality review and require an environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Suzanne Cheg, and I'm currently a resident of one ninety-one Shore Drive. My husband and I live in our family home, about three thousand square feet or so, and our children have gone. So we're empty nesters, and we're currently seeking another place to live in Arandakoi on the water. The options are very few in Arandakoi, and this project, I am totally in support of it. It would give us another option to consider. There are other places towards Webster, I know, other developments that have come up recently that we could look at, but we wanna stay in the Arandakoi area. We, our church is Holy Cross in Charlotte, and this development is right across the street from that. So, you know, I just wanna say once again, I am in support of this program, and I guess that's it. Just, and in addition, I guess, this would decrease the taxes in Arandakoi for all the other residents, which is also a big consideration of both myself and my husband. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is C.P. Maloney. I'm a lifetime resident of the town of Arandakoi. I am the president of Harbor Hill, Harbor Hill Association, but I'm not speaking tonight of that organization. I'm speaking as a, a private citizen. For almost twenty years, I had the docks across the river with a lease from the city of Rochester. I developed that area as best I could under the terms given to me by the city. I do have a couple of questions regarding this development that I hope the town planning board would answer. First of all, what happens to the dockers that are there now? Are they going to be displaced by the developer and have to seek other places to put their boats? That's a big question of mine. The other one is, what is the parking facility underneath the bridge? It looks like this development may be pushing under the bridge. I have a real problem with that, if that's the case. I'd like the developer to address that issue also. I am concerned about the height. I think that the height is a little tall for the town of Arandakoi, and I think in that area also, I hope the developer realizes that that is a landfill. You're gonna have to sink piling in there very, very deeply, like they did on the bridge when they found that they didn't have enough soil in there to really get the piling set for that bridge. I also wanna know about the traffic pattern. I see that in the town of Arandakoi, we're a little late. We should've made sure that that access off of the bridge, the four-lane, did not come up Titus Avenue. Instead, it went down Pattonwood, where it was originally supposed to go, over Lake Shore Boulevard, down to five ninety. Since that time, the town has decided that they would put in the cul-de-sacs on five ninety, which lengthens the time. And also, a lot of the traffic we're getting coming up Thomas Avenue is going out to Webster for work. That is impacting not just Thomas Avenue, but St. Paul Boulevard, List Avenue, Cooper Road, et cetera. It, it's a situation where we're not going to get around it. People have to get to work. People come home. I have seen the Stephen B. Roman, and I've traveled on the Stephen B. Roman. That's the ship that comes in and uses our port. When the bridge goes up, not as nice as the old one, which was a lot faster, this one cycles at about twenty minutes. The old bridge was a little faster. This bridge, however, has to go up early for the Stephen B. Roman to come in. So yes, we will have traffic. But I lived in this area for all my life. I lived at Westridge at the harbor. I say that I'm going to be able to be impacted by that boat every so often because I live in a beautiful area, and it's a summertime area. When the sailboat goes under the bridge, he's going to have to stop that traffic all over the place also. So I don't mind. I live in a recreational summertime area, and I just wanna again say, please, make sure before you approve this plan that you look at the docks along the river, who's going to own those, and the developer, if he's going to own those, make sure that the dockers who are there have access to those. Two, the traffic, I'm a little concerned about that. Three, the height. And four, the Stusson, Stusson Street Bridge, the Colonel Patrick O'Rourke Bridge. Thank you.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Maloney? I'm, over here, sir. Sir, for the record, I didn't get your address.
It's seventeen Glencove Rise in Harbor Hill.
Thank you, sir.
And just so the public's aware, so we don't have any more, the, the docks are not part of this project right now. Those are part of the City of Rochester lands, and there's no parking under the bridge proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I missed that. The figures?
The docks are not currently part of this project. That is part of the City of Rochester land that is not under the control of this ownership group, and they're not proposing any parking underneath the bridge.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Adam, and I live at one ten Beacon View Court. I wanna share a little story with you. Easter morning, any of my neighbors who know me, and most do, know that I go out in my red bathrobe and my slippers to fill the bird feeder, toss a little corn for the squirrels, and watch the deer linger in my backyard to sneak a snack when I step away. I took a deep breath on that warm spring morning and totally enjoyed my surroundings. Then I'd look to the north at the bridge. I feel sad because I am forced to think about this massive hundred and thirty-five-unit apartment complex that could be the view from this spot in the future. What will become of this area and its environment, environmental impact on all things that live here? I flashed forward. If this project is approved, two-plus years of construction, twelve hours a day, dirt, noise, light pollution, displacement of wildlife, complete destruction of an EPod. And then I started to remember a conversation with one of the developers. I asked him what's to become of my view. He told me I had no right to my view. I did not own it. Shame on him. I do have a right to protect my property value, and if my resale and property value could be and most likely will be compromised because my view will no longer be of a woodlands and a meadow and the quaint little sheds of the boaters, my reality and the view will be of an asphalt parking lot and a massive apartment complex. I bought my home for its entire quality of life it afforded me, the tranquility of the area. I would not have even considered buying this home if there was an apartment complex behind it, never. And the likelihood of anyone buying my home and paying my current market value is unlikely. Ask yourself this question: Would you want a massive apartment complex literally in your backyard? Lighthouse Point, as per the town of Arandakoi's master plan in nineteen ninety-nine, was to be a large fifty-plus acre concept that was supposed to encumber, encompass most of the Pattonwood corridor. These developers, by calling an apartment complex Lighthouse Point, this does not make it in line with the town's original vision and concept. They have now crammed it down to a five-point-five acre lot in an EPod zone on a contaminated brownfield site to just apartments. There will be no public recreation available, no retail shops, no restaurants, and no pride of ownership. There is no cohesiveness with the surrounding neighborhoods. They will be the largest buildings in this predominantly single-family homes neighborhood, and quite honestly, the largest buildings in the entire area along the river. It will not be in harmony with the environment and conflicts with the preservation of the natural beauty of the town's riverfront area. It will be only a matter of time before the long-established traditions of the seasonal boaters will be driven out. There is no formal agreement with the City of Rochester to purchase, purchase any further property along the river. If this luxury complex, which I have nicknamed Troll Towers, because who wants to live under a bridge with a view of a dirty green-brown river, and across that river is a parking lot and railroad tracks, does not, I don't believe that this will succeed, and I don't consider them to do any further development. Then what? Lighthouse Point is not an I-Square. This project does not have community support like that of the town standing behind I-Square and the Noles. This project does not benefit those around it or to the community. It is a sad compromise to the original master plan, and it is about profit for Albert Gilbert and the developers, not the benefit of the community. I hope that the board will seriously consider denying this application for a concept that is not in line with the town's master plan and does threaten the quality of life for anyone who lives near it. All who live in the River Harbor neighborhood have made a commitment to this town, and I hope the town board shares that commitment to us. This project does not have community support like that of the town standing behind I-Square and the Noles. This project does not benefit those around it or to the community. It is a sad compromise to the original master plan, and it is about profit for Albert Gilbert and the developers, not the benefit of the community. I hope that the board will seriously consider denying this application for a concept that is not in line with the town's master plan and does threaten the quality of life for anyone who lives near it. All who live in the River Harbor neighborhood have made a commitment to this town, and I hope the town board shares that commitment to us. Thank you very much.
I'm Ron Lerner. I've lived in Aranacoyt since 1942, and I go back far enough to remember when there was a dump there where one could hunt rats. The highest best use of this piece of property would be to have a green space on it, nicely landscaped, and leave it that way. If you must build something, something with a lot smaller footprint and no higher than one story, and let's not have any more postmodernist semi-ugly buildings in Aranacoyt, they have enough of them on the other side of the river. Also, has anybody looked into it as to whether we have any Scott Conjul-type hands in the taxpayers' pockets on this, even before a brick has been put atop one another? Think about that. We got along fine without it before. We can get along fine with it now. Thank you.
Mr. Warner? Mr. Warner, what's your address for the record, please, sir?
I live in Marks Hill Lane, a little cul-de-sac off St. Paul Boulevard. And...
Okay.
If everyone could introduce themselves and give their address before they speak, please.
My name is Rob Catalani. I live at 274 Alexander Street in Rochester. And, as I, what I know of this project, I am in support of it. I also have been in Aranacoyt my whole life. I don't live there now, but lived there, went to high school here, West Aranacoyt, and also owned a home here till very recently, when I moved. And I'd like to, I'm considering coming back to Aranacoyt, but I personally think there isn't enough new development in Aranacoyt. I'm right now living in an apartment, and I would be open to living in an apartment. And I know the last guy just joked about postmodern. I happen to like postmodern, but I don't know if this is a postmodern project. But I, living in Aranacoyt my whole life, now I spent, you know, almost 40 years in Aranacoyt. A lot of my peers who stayed in the upstate New York live in Webster, live in Penfield, live in Fairport, and many of them don't live here, because there's not any new development in Aranacoyt. So, I realize this is apartments and not houses. I'm not smart enough for the, those who talked before about the changing demographies of how people live, but I'm all for new development in Aranacoyt. I can say one other thing. Almost 10 of my years after I was out of high school and college, I lived, you know, you could punt a football from where I lived to where this development is. I lived on Lismore Green. And I think, I thought the area was down in this area where the Studson Street Bridge or what it used to be, you know, doesn't, isn't the most attractive area. I think it's underutilized for its beauty, and I would hope a project like this would help bring some additional beauty to this area. So, I would be in support of this project, and thank you very much.
My name is Brian Lamdola. I currently live at 33 Shorewood Drive. I do own property at 977 Thomas Avenue. Right here. Okay? Pretty picture, wooded-out area. They made reference to contacting neighbors. One time in 1999, after it was changed to Harborview Tax District, or whatever you call it, they contacted me for right of first refusal. I told them my house wasn't for sale. I raised my family there. Property value's going to sink. I get to look at dumpsters, a parking lot, and three stories of people watching me float in my pool. Thank you.
My name is Mel Rosen Garden. I live at 385 Thomas Avenue. And I'm very grateful for all the intelligent and eloquent people that spoke tonight. It shows well for Aranacoyt, and I appreciate that. I wish we could put the slide up again about the overview, because there were some questions that I have that I would like the developers to answer. It seemed like everyone was moving out of Aranacoyt, because we're all empty nesters now, and we don't want to live here. But at the same time, our property values are going to go up, which means somebody's going to want to live there, and I don't understand that contradiction. I also don't understand why this development is going to make the Charlotte area a destination. I don't think it's going to make it a destination at all. I think what we should do is follow the example of Buffalo in a similar situation, who is sitting on a river and a Great Lake, and they've opened that up for public access. If that was a green space where people could go and have picnics, have access to the water, would be a much better idea than putting up a behemoth building. And I've lived in Aranacoyt for 28 years. I do not know of any four-story building in a residential area. Aside from East Ridge Road, this, I think, would be the only one. And it does not fit. Also, and I'm sure you're going to delve into this in great detail, the traffic situation is untenable. And I've been before this board before to say the same thing, and I'm going to take this opportunity to say it again. Thomas Avenue is a throughway. It's a residential throughway. People are coming off of a four-lane St. Paul, and I don't think you could spend 10 minutes on St. Paul without seeing somebody going 50 miles an hour. Coming from the other way, they're coming off the Ontario Parkway, going 60 miles an hour. If they hit the lights, we're right down onto Thomas Avenue. So, that's the traffic that we have. We have the beach, we've got motorcycles, we're a throughway, a two-lane throughway. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have streetlights. It's just an untenable situation to put 135 families. And the way it's designed now, it could not possibly work. You could not, if you know how you come off the bridge onto Thomas Avenue, you come around that corner and away you go. How is somebody going to get in and out of that facility? The only choice is to come all the way around some way and come out that way. The plan as-is would just never work. And you couldn't put a light there. You'd stop up all the traffic. So, there's so many issues here. There's an environmental issue. There's a traffic issue. There's, you know, you talked so much tonight about the visual impact of wind turbines. What about the visual impact of this monstrosity on your lakefront? It's, I wish I was more prepared. I apologize that I'm not. I did sign the petition. I didn't email it in, so that's two more votes. But I think if we had the same time, money, and resources as the developers had to really get public input, I, how many times have you seen the room this full? I don't think everyone here is in favor of it. I think we all came out to say, no way. We don't want it. That's my thoughts and my feelings on it. I would be very, very disappointed if this went to fruition. There's just too many serious issues to allow this to continue. Thank you.
My name is Roseanne Lopa, and I live at 210 Totem Trail. And I also have a boat dock down on the river there, so I know the area well. I'm not totally opposed to having that area developed, but I do question how this development, in particular, the size of it, provides a better access for residents to enjoy the river. If the plan was for 95 units, and that's in the regulation today, why are we always talking about 135? That's a 42% increase over the allowable. That increases the traffic. It increases all the problems of this property. And it also doesn't allow for walkways for the public, green space that people could picnic on, all those sort of things that are important to the time and should be in a harbor district. The other thing is, as a gentleman just said, traffic. Traffic is going to be horrendous there. I know. I drive that every day. They had, they did a study in the fall. Well, go back and do the study in the summer, and you'll see a totally different traffic pattern. Additionally, they didn't speak about it, but I'm concerned of parking. In one of the previous workshops I was at, they said one and a half car spaces for every unit. In today's world, that's unreasonable. If they're talking about young couples and retirees, let's face it, everybody has two cars. So, that's a concern of mine. And I believe five stories is too high. Again, if they reduced it to the 95, I think that that would be a project that possibly could float with the area and have the appropriate sizing. So, I don't know why they're already building 135-unit sample and drawings when they don't even have a variance from the town to do that. And I just urge that you look at the proposal and build something that's part of the community. I would like to see condos in there, because I, if I downsize, I'm going to go to a condo, and I would love to have a condo down on the river. Or a mixed use of that. And I think with 95 units, you could have a mixed use of condos and apartments. So, I urge you to build something that's part of the community, where people want to stay in the community, and not just something stuck in the middle of the community there and that ruins the riverfront. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Natkis. I live at 170 Eaton Road. I don't have an elegant speech prepared. I'm just going to speak from my heart. Most of the residents of Aranacoyt are elderly. My neighborhood, especially my, my mother lives with me. I took my, her home over from her and my father when they were unable to take care of it any longer, and my mother resides with me. She's 95 years old. All of my neighbors around the neighborhood stayed in their homes until they had to go into a nursing home. Aranacoyt is not like other communities. It is a community of elderly people. I worked at the banks of Chase Manhattan Bank in Aranacoyt for over 25 years, and those were my clients that I took care of. And I know my neighbors, and now there is some turnover in my neighborhood. There's a lot of zombie homes in Aranacoyt that I think, before anybody starts talking about, well, why don't we build this new project? Why don't we consider, why don't we take care of what we already have? And that's my concerns on the issue. Thank you.
My name is Missy Pelosi. I live at 113 Pontiac Drive. I've lived in Aranacoyt my whole life. I would like to see something new and exciting for everybody of all ages, young or old, doesn't matter, into that area. I've been here 32 years. I've never seen anything down there. I'm for it. I hope it goes through, and I hope the people that are opposed to it see the good it can bring. Thank you.
My name's Dorothy Broach. I live at 70 Beacon View Court. We, just about all of us, live in a home that 40 or 50 years ago was not yet built. And some developers saw the potential that our land had, and as you drive down our street, you can see that these homes belong there. They fit the area. They enhance the area, and they have created a neighborhood in which we live. We, some of us, were not sure that we wanted the change that came with the O'Rourke Bridge, but we went to the planning meetings, voiced our thoughts, and put forth our ideas, and they were added to the design, and we were heard, and those ideas were added to the project. And the outcome, for the most part, was good for our community and for those who, on a daily basis, pass through Aranacoyt. We understand that change happens and that there needs to be growth for a community to survive, but just because the property is vacant doesn't mean that that is the right location for that development. We have a traffic safety issue right now on Thomas Avenue at Beacon View and Eaton that adding more housing to will only add more danger. Drivers do not have patience to sit and wait for people to make turns off from Thomas Avenue, either onto Eaton or onto Beacon View Court. They constantly drive around onto the shoulder rather than wait. More traffic, more problems. And as was spoken, we don't have the sidewalks. We don't have the lights. We have a crosswalk that I may tell you if you try to use, and you blink and you don't see a car coming, you're going to get nailed, because they don't believe in stopping for people in crosswalks. I was told when we went to the first meeting that these gentlemen had at the end of our street, that they would very easily walk in and pay for our home at the appraised value before their project started, where our values to drop once their development is done. I have find it hard to believe that they're going to pay, they're going to pay me the value of my house if this project goes through and my value goes down. And yet, they promised they would do that. They talked about the drive-through of our community to Charlotte. The biggest drive-through to Charlotte is Abbott's, and that's only in the summer. So, we just have a huge problem. We've lived on Beacon View Court ourselves for 35 years, and our home is on the edge of the proposed development. Some people who have spoke here are only concerned, are very concerned for the situation, but they're not looking at it from their backyard like I am. I'm asking you to reconsider this project. Our area wasn't designed for this type of a development. I would really appreciate having a green space down there. I feel like we're not going to have any at this rate in Aranacoyt. You might have the buildings to put the people in, but what are they going to do once they're here? No place to go. Thank you.
Ken Schwanker, 285 Shore Drive. I've, I started sailing up and down the river, starting in the early '70s. I've seen a lot of change on the river. I used to work for Joe Seiler before, before the Marina was owned by, who's he, Watsons? Al, yeah. Al was just selling boats out of, out of the, out of the Marina. Over the years, there've been rumors of some kind of housing along the river. It's always been exciting to hear about it. I think it would be a mistake to ignore the possibility of having something on the river, whether it be as big as the, the development is proposed or something is a little smaller. The key thing, I think, would be not to ignore the possibility of having that and make use of that, that space and clean it up. All right? Thanks.
My name is Chris Schwanker. I'm from 285 Shore Drive. I think this is a great project. I think building along the river apartments that are on the river would be an asset to Aranacoyt and something that I would truly look at as, as a possible home for when I want to leave my home. So, I hope you consider the project. Thank you. Favorably.
My name is Bob Rouse. I live at 302 Bay Village Drive. I live in a condominium development, four stories high, 129 units. We don't have a lot of traffic going in and out. We love living on the bay. I'm a boater. I've been boating on Lake Ontario and Lake Erie, visiting all the ports in Canada around here. They all have beautiful areas. They all have housing in their ports. People love to live on the water. We're running out of space. A project like this would give more people the opportunity to enjoy waterfront living as I do. I've lived on the bay for 30 years, or I'm sorry, 50 years, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. As long as I have the water in front of me, I'm happy. There are a lot of people that only get to enjoy it by going to restaurants. There, there isn't a lot of space for people to build housing. This kind of would give more people the pleasure of living on the water. I support this project, and I hope that the board will give it approval. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I make one more comment?
Why isn't everybody, anybody that's willing to, we're getting near the end here, so let's sign it lined up and...
I would just like to point out, the reason that these things are successful in the other communities, so Webster and Pittsford and Perrington, is there's, they're much more developed. There's restaurants to go to, there's malls to go to, there's all kinds of activity. Unfortunately, at the moment, we don't. And I, I don't see any way that this is going to make this place a destination. This is totally a summer place. People do not come to the lake, no matter what you put there, in the winter.
David LaPerry, 7 Meadow Cove Road. I grew up in Aranacoyt. I've only been away from the town for about the last 20 years, but I'm a property owner in Aranacoyt.
David LaPerry, 7 Meadow Cove Road. I grew up in Arundic quite. I've only been away from the town for about the last 20 years, but I'm a property owner in Arundic quite. To the points that have been made tonight, all of them have been very good points and some of them have a lot of validity to it and, and some of them really aren't worth the speech that they've indicated. But more importantly is the fact that our waterfront, excuse me, our waterfront is underdeveloped. We could really use something along the water to enhance the town. You've got a lot of positive things happening in this town. You've got a lot of commercial that's being developed to help the town. I think that, I think to at least consider this project and have it go forward in some way or fashion is going to only enhance the, the beauty of the town and create an additional tax base for the town and help the residents of the town with an alternative place to go, which is bound by the water. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Chesterton and I am, my parents reside at 911 Thomas Ave. I am a former Arundic quite resident and currently reside in Henrietta. There's, tonight, there's been a lot of, you know, good, good things brought up to both points, but forgive me in advance, I'm very tired at this point and really hot and haven't thought through everything that I've wanted to say, so I'm just going to try to make this quick and, and get some key points out there. And one, I just would like to say that for this big of a, of an issue with this many concerns and responses, it's, it's kind of somewhat hard to take being set back all this way and, and people aren't feeling as though they're getting the time to communicate, to communicate and address their concerns with the board. So there are a lot of unanswered questions still regarding the details of what this is going to look like and we'd like to know what, we'd like to know some details about the, the sizes, how many one-bedroom apartments, how many two-bedroom apartments for the multifamily and will pets be allowed? What amenities that are going to be included that are going to make it more of a luxury of apartment besides just the, the cost? The, also, what kinds of funding is being included in the project and what kind of government funding, if any? And it's been mentioned that a big piece of this is appealing in fulfilling the desire for more senior living in Arundic quite. And while I understand that that is very much a concern to some people, I don't think it's been really established well as to what the demographic of that looks like is, that's going to fill these spaces opposed to, in comparison with the multifamily spaces and what demographics that's going to look like. Who else is this going, going to appeal to, to bring them into Arundic quite as new residents of Arundic quite? So what projections have been made to address that question? Can, can we get a little bit more factual information from, you know, the planning board and just really get the information? I think that people would feel a lot better equipped and comfortable with what's going on and, and we'd get better feedback all around, on all sides, if we had more information. And the details do matter to the people, to, to everybody. It should matter in the community as well as, I think, wait, I'm sorry, just one quick...
I have a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
You, you mentioned a few times that you weren't getting the details that you needed. The, 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 have you been able to go to the planning, the Department of Planning and Zoning and they didn't give you the details that you wanted or?
Yes.
Community Services or?
We're the Department of Community Development, our Planning and Zoning Office. We've got a full copy of the, all the application materials available in our office. You're more than welcome to come up, up to our office and take a look through everything that the board has access to.
Okay, yes, I, I would definitely like that information.
We're, we're an open book about this stuff. And remember, this is the preliminary hearing, you know, for preliminary information. This is...
Oh, okay.
First step.
Yeah.
There's nothing going to happen tonight, no...
So I'm looking too far ahead into this.
Well, no, your, your input is well, well taken.
Is it? I hope it is. And I, like I said, I'm speaking just kind of freely and maybe a little scattered. I'd like to be more...
I guess my point is, is that you, you have, you can have access, you have accessibility to, to the information that you want.
Yeah.
And the information that we have.
Okay, because I'd, I'd love to have that in my hands and I will get that, if, if you could write down where exactly you're located and the name of what I need to request when I get there. And I do agree with the traffic issue is huge. At 911 Thomas, it's, it's incredibly dangerous and it takes a very long time to back out of that driveway or even whether you're backing out or not. Sorry, is everybody falling asleep?
We are approaching five minutes though, so...
Okay, well, thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
I just have a question because on this sheet that was handed out, it says on here that it's the preliminary final site plan approval. Can you explain to me what you're, you're telling me that it's, this is just the first step and nothing's going to happen, but according to what this says, it makes us think that something is going to happen.
Well, that is the intention of the applicant, to receive preliminary and final site plan approval and all of these permits, but it's a long process. So the way it's advertised is advertising the what they are seeking in the long term. It's not necessarily that that's going to happen tonight. And it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen tonight, I can tell you that.
See, the seeker determination of significance needs to be made before any board can take action before it. And that process won't be concluded until the lead agency process...
Right.
...has been complete. And that won't happen until April. So that's why, that's why the comment is being made that no decision by this board will be made related to this application because seeker has yet, not yet been completed.
And lead agency status hasn't been, has it?
Correct.
In order to even initiate the seeker review.
Exactly.
Okay, again, you're saying April. April is just a matter of days away. That's why we're all sitting here concerned.
Well, I, and I'm just, as a point of clarification, that would be the, at the next planning board meeting would be the earliest that any decision could be made and then subsequent board approvals would be required, just to indicate that nothing was being determined this evening. That was the only clarification.
My name is Phil Marsh. I live at 608 Edgemere Drive in Greece. I'm not a resident, but I do own property on Pattonwood Drive. I own the Border Patrol Building and I own the building next to it. I'm in support of what these guys want to do here. First of all, I do a lot of traveling throughout the United States and this waterfront, in Charlotte included, is totally underdeveloped. Every place I go where there's waterfront, the place is teeming with, you know, high-end condos and apartments and commercial projects as well, and, and retail rather. What we have here is a group of developers who are local. They're not some guys that are coming in from Los Angeles, California, looking to make a big buck and run. They have their own livelihoods and their own, their lives are invested here. So I, I think that you could take that part of, you know, that, that part of the equation where you think that you're just going to build some kind of development and run away and turn it into low-income housing, that, that doesn't make any sense. I know they're fighting the same battle across the river in Charlotte and they're getting the same sort of arguments. And nobody likes change, I think, is what the problem is. And I think that what they're going to do will be great for the community. I, I truly do believe that. And I remember back in 2004, when I was before the board here for the Border Patrol Building, they had asked me to make it a, you could say it's a beautiful building. I think everybody knows what that is. It's got a nice stone front on it. It's got the, very nice architecture, really. And one of the comments the town board, or that the board had made was that it was, that was going to be the flagship, coming over that bridge, that was the first building people were going to see. And they had, you know, at the time, the town was talking about all this development that was going to happen and that was the first thing that was on the board. And I haven't seen anything yet, really. And these guys are willing to invest a lot of money to do a project that I think will develop, will enhance the community. So anyway, I, I support it.
Sue McKenna, I live at 50 Beacon View Court and my house is sort of right on the end of the development. I just had a couple comments that I wanted to make. I think most of my neighbors have really said most of the things that need to be said. I know we talked a lot about retirees. They talked about retirees really, when you own a home, you're not going to sell a home and go to a five-story apartment. You're going to sell a home and maybe buy a smaller, downsized, one-story house. But also the young people, the millennials, do you really think that millennials are going to come and want to buy, put an apartment, live in an apartment, a five-story apartment on the river? They're going to buy something downtown. They're going to buy one of the lofts, they're going to buy one of the new developments that are going in downtown. There's nothing for young people at that age in Arundic quite. So I have an issue with that part of the project. The other thing is, there's another building that we really haven't talked about that's behind the two buildings and the clubhouse that faces Thomas Avenue. That's, they're calling that a luxury apartment. There's no view. All you're going to get is Thomas Avenue or the back of the front building. How are you going to market that? I think that's all I need to say. Thanks.
Thank you.[1319.53][1319.53](APPLAUSE). Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Heather Chesterton. I live at 911 Thomas Ave. I think one of my biggest concerns, it's hard to boil it down to one, I pretty much feel like everybody that has spoken in opposition to this project. And my property is exactly right next to where that second building that they've come up with to build is going to be. In other words, I'll be on my deck and it'll be like, hi guys. It might as well be in my backyard. I'm the closest property there. If you notice on all the different maps that have went up, usually my property is right there showing it, my built-in pool and whatnot. I think my first, one of my big concerns, of course, is I'm going to lose my privacy totally. And I'm wondering, you know, in life, let's face it, you know, you've got the car salesman and so on and so forth. I'm wondering what type of people are really going to live in this place? That's a concern. You know, we, I don't know, is, will there be a basketball court? I don't know. Who's that going to bring to the area? I'm very concerned about who's going to live in these places. I'm concerned, is it going to be subsidized? Is it going to get government money? Because I think we all know what happens when that happens. That's my biggest concern and I think parallel to that would be the fact of the type of ground that it is. And quite honestly, we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen if people are going to start getting cancer and everything else. It's, it's just the way it is. As far as Arundic quite not having that sort of property, you know, with these big fancy places or, or whatever apartments, yeah, we've got the water. Let's keep that. Let's be able to see it and enjoy it. My property lines right up with the railroad bed so that when I'm in my yard, I see all the different people coming through on their runs. Sometimes they're in groups, sometimes they're alone. They come through with their dogs. The kids will come through as a little group on their bicycles and whatnot. It's a beautiful thing. There really isn't that many places in Arundic quite that that can happen. So I, I guess that's just, you know, some of my concerns and I would just ask that it really does, you know, be thought about in a lot of different ways. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll be as brief as possible. My name is Jim Nipper. I showed up, I live at 130 Wyndham Road. I showed up in Arundic quite in 1953. Titus and Cooper, successful family business and I now live in East Arundic quite. And I echo the words of the gentleman a couple speakers ago where I would encourage the town to seize the opportunity to do something about our port of Rochester. And I think these developers have a lot more thought put into this than the people that are saying nay to it. It would seem to me that there are compromises that could be worked out and I support the project. Thank you.[1549.69][1549.69](APPLAUSE).
My name is Aaron Foster. I live at Tenbright Autumn Lane. I was home tonight. My mom walked in the door. She's an avid walker, she's an avid hiker, she loves biking and, and she goes on that little path, that old railroad. So I got social media. I said, I'm going to go down to this meeting, I'm going to stop those evil developers. You know, they're not taking over my mom's walking path, you know, rally the troops. And then I sat, I listened to their presentation. I'm unbiased, I live in Greece. And they're not touching my mom's walkway. And I started, it kind of interesting, you know, I mean, so it's, it didn't sound that bad. Also, it's not my backyard. And I know that if it were my backyard, I would not want a five-story building in my backyard. I totally understand that. But at, at the same time, you, you have to adapt. There's got to be something there. You can't sit there for another 50 years with just a landfill and you can't just put a park in there. I mean, you gotta, you gotta do something. There's got to be compromise on both sides, you know? Whether it's chopping a story off or, or maybe condos instead of apartments, there's got to be a compromise in there somewhere. And that's, that's all I have to say after listening from an unbiased perspective. And, and, you know, I played basketball and I did sell cars for a while too, so you know, let's, let's not stay away from the racial undertones. And Michael, you look like the man.
Aaron, Aaron, honey, I didn't get your address.
Tenbright Autumn Lane.
Bright Autumn Way?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Aaron, thanks for getting involved and coming down.
Thank you, sir.
One brief thing I'd like to address the board again. Kimberly Chesterton, 911 Thomas Ave. I, that was well spoken and I agreed with, you made a lot of great points, but the comments at the end were very offensive and direct and didn't need to be made. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Parks. I live at 1434 Titus Avenue, right over here, and I've got a boat on the river. Been there 34 years. Same dock, right near this project. It's not a good thing for me, but it's a good thing for everyone else, so I have no qualms with it. It'll be most inconvenient for me to drive through that construction. It'll be most inconvenient for me to watch it all go on. And finally, probably I'll be displaced, but that's progress and there's nothing wrong with that. I do support this project despite the fact it's not the best thing for me personally because the world should not bend because of what I need. We should all work at what's best for all. The community will definitely profit by this. This is good and it'll lower my taxes, which are huge. So, because it's going to lower the tax base. I don't see an issue with that at all. I've heard a lot of comments, people saying, put a parkland in it. Great idea. Buy it and put in a parkland. But in the meantime, I think they want about $4 million for the land, so have at it, you know? I don't know how your checkbook is, but mine's pretty thin. So you might want to consider these things. People suggesting turning everything into public land and making it for the good of the public and the convenience of the public, I think that's socialism. They tried that in Moscow, it didn't work out so good. So be that as it may, I'll leave you to be.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Cunningham. I live at 306 Beach Avenue. I also grew up in Charlotte. Holy Cross is my church and I've seen a lot of different changes through the years and I got to say, this is very exciting, the momentum I see in my neighborhood of Arundic quite. I... I constantly am excited to see what's going on in I Square. There's a momentum here that I haven't seen in years. And even my grandparents are getting excited about this. So it's just so wonderful that there's this opportunity. And these are local guys, like we said. And I really think there's just this window here that we have to make this happen. And I always say, I'm a teacher myself, and I'm really big on analyzing things. But there gets to be a time where analysis can be paralysis. And I don't want that to happen here with Arundacote, because I really think we can really make something happen on the waterfront. And Webster and Greece and all of them, they'll be talking about us. And I think that would be really awesome, okay? And I love this area, and I've raised my kids here. And I really would love to see this upscale apartments. I have, I graduated from the U of R. I have friends that are in the medical school, the William Simon Business School. And they always said they wish there were more areas that they could live and raise their families. And I always brought them down here, and they said, well, there's just really no place to go. There's, and now I really think, I'm starting to talk it up. And maybe my second career will be real estate. I'm not sure. But I really have a passion for this area. I understand both sides. And I do think there can be a compromise, and there can be a win-win here. And I just hope that happens. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thought we're going to move on to the next matter before the board? Or applicant can go forward. I'm not sure at this point.
So I know we're here late, so I'll just be real quick. Again, just, we feel that this is exactly the sort of project that the town contemplated with the 1999 rezoning and the comprehensive plan. Just a couple issues. We did provide a comprehensive traffic study. It was done August 20th and September 1st. So it was done in summertime. There's no, there's nothing contrary. It indicates there really is going to be no traffic issue whatsoever. The issue of an environmental impact statement is not well-founded at all. There's no potential for any significant impacts. The issue with the brownfield is a positive. We are going to clean up. You would have environmental impacts if we didn't do anything. We're going to clean up the brownfield. We've done comprehensive studies. We've got a remedial investigation. We submitted the DEC. We're only going to go forward with our remedial plan that will be sanctioned by the DEC. So there will not be any impact from that. We're doing exactly what is required on this program and what is encouraged. The stormwater, Land Tech has a comprehensive plan. They're going to do underground storage. And they're going to comply with the, you know, with the general permit. As far as, you know, again, I'm sure we, I've been through this many times. The board has been through this many times. I understand neighbors are upset, not in their backyard. This really isn't in the backyard. They've got the New York Central, the CSX area that really is kind of free for them. We're beyond that. And I'm confused on whether they want the view or don't want the view, whether they want, I mean, our plan is to, there already is plenty of screening. We're going to put in more screening. And I don't know if they want to, you know, they complain, oh, they could see the river. But I thought they were complaining they were losing trees. So it seems contradictory. I think there's a reason why that street is named Beacon View and not River View. But, because I'm not sure they had a clear view. But we are leaving a green space right here next to where most of the people on Beacon View who are speaking. We're going to have that not developed with buildings. So there's going to be nothing there blocking them. So we don't think, you know, that there is going to be any potential for a significant impact. A lot of big projects go forward. I just was involved with the casino project. Entire, we had a negative declaration because we showed that every potential impact we mitigated or avoided by having a green project, and this is going to be a green project. The issue on the market study, we've done market studies. This project is going to have no problem whatsoever. We're going to fill all these units. We wouldn't be going forward with this if we didn't believe that. Between seniors, people who like boating, it's going to be no problem whatsoever. And, you know, whether we have basketball courts or not, we're going to have a great project. So I hear people saying, oh, this should only be in Florida or whatever. That's, you know, we can't have the kind of backward thinking. We need progress here in Arundacote. I was born in Arundacote. I grew up in Arundacote. I like this town. I don't live here now. My uncle was a supervisor for about 10 years. I took pride in living in Arundacote. I think it's, you know, where the land meets the water. We've got to take advantage of that. And this project will take advantage of where the land meets the water. So I urge you to move forward. I know we can't do anything tonight. And we're ready to listen to all your comments and give you any more information that you need. Thank you.
Couple of things that I would like to add before, just, you know, and I think the board can add some comments also if they'd like to. But I still think that the project may be a little dense, in my opinion. I don't, I think they would like to see more green space around the building. And some of the things I saw from the renderings do allude to me to Florida and less of upstate New York waterfront.
Okay.
You know, maybe you want to look at the imagery of what the bridge is like, with the those tones and the imagery of that, rather than that little look that you have there, which does really say something Floridaisque to me. And I don't know, maybe it's just the colors, the plainness, the way it looks. Just doesn't seem in keeping with what upstate New York riverfront waterfront development should be.
You mean the look of the buildings?
Right, the look of the building.
Okay, okay.
Just the blue and the flags and everything just makes it look Floridaisque. I mean, it's the first thing that I see. It's just look Florida.
Okay.
All right. So just work on that, I think, a little bit. Jay, did you, or I'll start with Bernie. Bernie, you got anything you want to add at this point?
Well, I just heard something tonight. I didn't realize that this brownfield credit expires. Can we get more information on that?
Yeah, well, we have to finish by the end of 2017 or the particular, well, let me take that back. We have a deadline to finish this project. I actually think it's 2019. Because we're in a very peculiar situation on whether, I don't think we fit into the 2017 cutoff. I think we fit into 2019 cutoff, frankly. But regardless, we have a deadline to get this done in order to get the particular tax credit program we're into. There is still a brownfield program, but it would be a different scenario. We get an 18% credit. That would go away. We would be put into a different regime that we have is no longer, would no longer be available if somebody, you couldn't apply and get the 18% we're getting now today if you were a new developer.
Maybe that's an answer you can give us, exact specifics.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Are you saying that the project has to be finished by then, or you have to have?
It has to be finished.
Broken ground, okay.
Well, I take that back. The remediation has to be finished. You know, so we have to put in all the parking lots and the, you know. The remediation is going to be the cover. So the cover is going to be partly the parking lots, can be partly dirt, you know, whatever. And we may have to excavate some hotspots. There's a couple of spots and exceedances where we may have to dig out that isn't exactly, you know, settled. We've been waiting, frankly, a long time for the DEC. I call them every other week to bug them and saying, where are you guys? So we're trying to get them moving to get a decision and put it up for, it will go up for public comment, by the way, our remedial plan. And we've been pushing the DEC to try to make that happen. But, you know, we're, they're waiting for the Health Department and somewhere in Albany, so.
One thing I'd like to mention that we will be asking LaBella to look at the traffic study and the environmental studies just to give us background information on some of the things that we don't feel like we're capable of understanding.
Right. You know, and we understand, I mean, obviously, when the bridge up, it's, goes up, it's a problem for everybody. It's just kind of the fact of life around there. And yes, is there traffic on Thomas Avenue? But the study shows this isn't going to cause any particular problems using this property. I mean, there's still going to be traffic on Thomas Avenue, but we're going to be, I think, at all A or B level of service. We're not, we're not going to cause any issues here.
Bernie, do you have any other comments?
That's it. Thank you.
Can you go to Jay?
I don't, we didn't have, or at least I didn't see the whole remediation. And I had a bunch of questions and concerns about the environmental study. It looked to me like there was contradictory information in there. And that's why I think it's important that we have the town engineer go over that plan. That's the biggest thing I have. There's other things, but we will have time to.
I think in your packet, we do not, I think at one, we did give the town our draft remedial plan like last, I don't know, last year at some point. What I can do is submit, it was in your packet because we thought we had enough information. But I can send everybody our current draft remedial plan.
There's also, there's some documents in here that are impossible to read because they're so, they're so small. The print is so small, so much information.
Oh.
On the, again, it's the environmental plan. I can.
You mean the actual plans or the, oh, in the EAF?
Yeah.
You know, I do have it on, oh, I, oh, I sent it to Carrie.
Yeah, so.
I sent Carrie a Dropbox link, so maybe you could share it with the board, or I could share it with the board. So you could pull it up in PDF and blow it up.
Yeah, we can, I can certainly share that. Generally speaking, our practices, we, the incoming hard copy application is stamped in and dated, and then that's scanned and circulated to the boards. They know they have the most current form and document in their, as part of their review. And it's also sort of the legal record. But I can just informally, for the board's benefit, forward that link to the Dropbox account. And we'll have the applicant's documentation in electronic form.
Right. No, I understand what you're saying, because those spider diagrams where they show you, you can't read in hard copy. So, but if you get the PDF and blow it up, you can, you can.
Jay, anything else? Mary?
Richard?
My two biggest issues are, one, understanding the soil sampling, and that's why I think we need LaBella to help us out. Because obviously, there's a lot going on underneath this project. The other thing is, you know, I have some concern about density and height. And certainly, I think that those can be looked at.
Right. And just, you know, obviously, in the first instance, the zoning board's decision, I mean, I understand it's the Seeker issue, too, or whatever. But the main reasons for the density are twofold. One is the extra cost for the, you know, for the environmental investigation remediation. You got to spread over so many units. And the second reason is the foundation. We have to do these piers or hilical piers, whatever. Because if you, and the geotech indicates it's not good. So we have to do extra expense on the, on the foundation, basically. That we, again, you can't do a one-story building and make it economically, it's not going to work because of the foundations. You really got to have a bigger building to spread over more units to make it cost-effective. And the land cost, frankly, we are paying a lot for the land, so.
Michael?
I, too, had a question about density and the height of the building. I certainly would understand if you were able to provide for us, you know, these complications that arise because you have to come up with the money to cover the costs. And I understand that. You can't, you can't build it on charity. But other than that, I'm okay.
Okay.
Kimmy?
Again, height, density, we're going to all say that. I'm also wondering if there's any opportunity for owner occupancy in there, if that can be blended in. Just something to think about, looking forward to your landscape architect and the designs that you bring forward, looking for slope and contour and a lot of things. I've been doing some sleuthing about the previous pavement and previous concrete, because those things are near and dear to my heart, managing stormwater, finding a lot of information about some potential problems you might run into when that's done on fill, and some reverse off-gassing that could potentially happen, that would actually sort of negate the whole filter and place concept. So love to talk to you about that and other stuff.
All right.
I think that's one of the comments that I had. We didn't have a lot of opportunity due to the emotion of the project to get more information from the neighbors of what they wanted. So I guess we're going to rely more on you guys as we move forward when it comes to buffering and things like that, your opinions, because you're the expert. Because as Al said, we don't know what they want.
Well, I'm not sure also, I mean, whether it's screened or open, I mean.
Yeah, we're still at a loss. And we want to, you know, we mentioned we have a landscape architect.
Still open, though, for the, at the next, will be still open.
Yeah, it's still open for public comment. And I think once you have your landscape plan, then hopefully we'll have some more meaningful, some meaningful comment on.
We're hoping to get a clear direction for him, but we can't, but that's okay.
Oh, and I forgot, I mean, we are going to have, and I think John is going to give some more detail on the public access. We're going, I mean, right now, there is no public access to this property. It's privately owned. Anybody who's going through is trespassing. We're going to allow, I mean, we're going to provide for people to get through, at least to the city property. We're going to provide for public access, so.
You can still access the city property from under the bridge like you do now.
Right. But this way, people from Thomas Avenue will be able to go right through. I mean, we're going to, we're going to allow that and provide for that.
And that brings up other issues, though. We don't have sidewalks on Thomas, and we'll have.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not going to be able to put sidewalks all the way down Thomas.
I mean, you have private property. I know there's always talk about parkland and public access. But ultimately, it's private property and, I don't know. I mean, I'm not necessarily for or against public access.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't want that, I'm just saying, but we're willing to do that, to provide, to allow access through. Obviously, it doesn't get you quite to the river, but, and what we're connecting to, you know, that's within the, I don't know, that's a county road or town road?
County road.
County road, so I guess it's the counties.
I mean, you're not building a gated community, so ultimately, if somebody wants to ride their bike down your roadway through your parking lot and into the, down to the thing, then they can do so.
Right, right. We're not going to be able to stop, and we're not going to stop them, so.
We did talk about the intersection on Thomas and the need for that to perhaps intersect with the property across the road. It still looks like it's.
Yeah, I mean, we talked, you did bring that up, and we talked about it. And, I mean, we're willing to go and, I guess we'll go and talk to the guy who owns the mini storage and see if he would make an adjustment. But it seems like such a small traffic flow from the mini storage, you know, to line up, to change the look of the project. I really think it makes more sense to come a straight shot in. But we'll, I guess our idea was, we'll talk to the mini storage guy and see if he would be willing to change his entrance into lineup with our entrance.
I think he's been here a couple of times looking to put the property up for another use.
Oh, okay.
And so, I mean, we certainly can't act until that, but.
But we'll follow through on that, because he'll probably be happy to have us across the street, frankly.
But, you know, if I could just elaborate a little bit on that county DOT issue. So we have, our plans are submitted to Monroe County DOT. And in those county comments that we didn't go through point by point, they didn't speak to that. So the future plans will elaborate on that location of the drive. So they have looked at it already.
We agree that we'll be probably talking about more details in the future. We just wanted to get an overview and, you know, just a preliminary feedback from the public.
Yep. Well, I've got seven pages of notes, so we've got some work to do.
Maybe get yourself a new BIC.
Yeah.
All right.
Can we, can we make just some final comments?
No, you'll have an opportunity to make a comment at the next, I think, at this point, right?
Well, he got to come back up and say.
Well, he's the applicant, so he has the right to come back up. You have the right to come back up to at a later date.
Thank you very much.
I believe the matter of Land Tech, acting agent for Seeker, determination of significance in Denzimer Road, we're still determining whether we have a complete application at this point.
Correct. That's under review by the town engineer, town staff, this board. And so no determination of significance will be made tonight. So that will be the next action for the board. So that's in progress.
So that'll be done at our April meeting?
Correct.
So just so the board knows that that is a future project, not tonight's project. Are you representing them also?
Yes, we have the same team here. But, all right, that'd be great. And again, as I indicated, we'd be happy to sit down with the staff and the towns engineers and attorneys and somebody from the. with the staff and the, the town's engineers and attorneys and somebody from the planning board, whatever, maybe to go over the issues. And I did receive the interpretation from the town's attorney as far as the, you know, the, the application in front of the zoning board and all that, so...
Okay.
But we'd be happy to sit down and meet and go through the issues, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. We have a few meeting minutes before us, some of those have been edited, some of them are new, or we have edited versions of them, I didn't look, I didn't look at them real close, 'cause you gave me new ones tonight.
Yeah, those were the ones that we made the additions to at the workshop.
So what do we have here, we got January 25th...
Yes, sir.
That were revised on 3/14.
I move approval of the revised plans for the January 25th meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seeing none. December 28th.
February 22nd.
I have December 28th in here too.
No, we already did those.
We did those at the February meeting, honey.
Alright, well, it was in here, I'll have time. I got three January 25ths, two December 28ths, 17 copies of February 22nd.
He's still nervous about the honey reference, so...
Alright, so we got February 22nd, these are draft.
Oh, he did them.
These are new to us tonight, or do we have them in our packet?
They should've been in your packet when it was dropped off before the workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the February 22nd meeting minutes.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Who seconded that?
What?
Who seconded that? Kimmy?
Kimmy.
You, Kimmy.
Kimmy's seconding things like crazy.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
What, what can I throw away, I'm taking home more than a library here.
I think the only thing you could throw away is the Henry, or the Marconi one for the water thing.
Are we through with the hotspot? No, huh?